And bring our November twenty fourth, twenty twenty. Regular board meeting the order and let's go ahead and rise for the pledge of allegiance. I'll lead us off. I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America, to the republic in which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Thank you. Hey, Krista, we'll take a real call when you're ready.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Jerome. Trustee Kenny.
That's it.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson.
Here.
Mayor Hammond.
Here.
Hey, item three, are there going to be any amendments to the agenda tonight?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion or remove item D eight from the agenda. The board of trustees has no authority in establishing public health policy. If trustees wish to express their personal opinions on the subject, it would be more appropriate in the board report section.
I'll second.
Okay.
Trustee Gator.
No.
Trustee Kenny.
No.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Okay, let's hear about it in the board reports. Yes. We'll get to it. All right, moving on. Conflicts of interest.
None.
Okay, good. Next item is. Public comment. This is for non agenda items. So if anyone from the public wishes to talk about a non agenda item, please raise your hand in the box and. Wait to be called on and state your name and address and you'll get three minutes to state your position.
Mayor Hammond, we have Christine Gator that would like to speak. Christine, if you can unmute yourself and you will have three, state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Christine Gator, eighty one thirty two, Fourth Street. And this is just to follow up the email that I sent to the mayor and trustees, the five minute video. About water conservation, and I know that we have an issue with that, the whole world does. But the video outlines a desert country, Israel, that has. The least amount of water, but has become a water superpower. And some of the things they've done, we can implement in our town. Some of the things the citizens can do, and we can educate them on is the drip irrigation, which. Conserves a lot of water versus sprinklers. And then what the town can do, the town can treat our sewer water. To an ultra pure level and then reuse it for our non potable water on landscape. So that saves us money on buying water. And then there's also the technology that tells you where and when pipes are leaking because a lot of water is lost through leaky pipes. So whenever the town or residents want to redo their piping. To know about that the technology is out there and they can add that, that will help conserve water. So that. Just some things I found to help the town and residents conserve water. And then about the water base rate that you guys were talking about at the work session last week. I was wondering if it's possible as my accountant detailed mind. That. The houses that required the plant, the water treatment plant to be expanded. If those houses would be charged a different. Capital improvement fee on their water bill than the the houses that. Were before. So let's just say. I don't know what date, but let's say houses built in two thousand and ten. That's when it started stressing our water treatment plant. So the houses before two thousand and ten are charged for the old loans and the portion of the expansion that has to do with. The taste and odor. And then the houses built after two thousand and ten are charged for the water treatment plant, plant expansion so that they pay their own way. And if that's possible, that would be my preference for charging different houses depending on when they're built. Different capital improvement rates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gator. Anyone else?
Mayor Hammond, we have Laramo County Commissioner John Kafalas. If you would like to unmute yourself.
Hello, Commissioner.
Hello, I I don't see myself. I guess I'm an attendee and so I don't, you don't get to see my lovely face.
Is that. I know it's you.
Well, there, hi, thank you. I was a. Okay, now I can see all the participants. So. Thank you. Thank you, folks. Thank you, colleagues up in Wellington for the. For this opportunity. I understand that my charge is to give you a high level overview of the community report, which I believe. Was included in your your agenda packet for this evening. You should have gotten an electronic version. So I'm going to just highlight a few things and then I'd, if 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 time allows, I'm more than happy to answer any questions. And I'd also like to talk a little bit about the Laramo County Community Survey and the interactive budget county budget tool that we have. So with that said, does that sound good to you, folks? Oh, I guess.
Well, my question is, this is a presentation, Commissioner, that you're going to give here in a little bit, right?
There I go. Yeah.
Am I, am I wrong on that? You're going to give a presentation here in a little bit on this. Are we out, are we done with the public comment, Crystal? Is that.
Forgive me, I'm sorry, Troy.
I see no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, okay. Well, then I guess, I guess you're lucky, John. Okay. Let's hear, let's hear all mine.
Okay, so as you folks know or may know that the commissioners, we've been visiting with various towns and municipalities. You know, to connect because it's been really hard to connect with everything that's going on. And I gave a presentation to the the town, town board and Timnith recently and and I'm really happy to be here with you all up in Wellington. So the community report, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty report, you all should have a, an electronic copy. This is the first year that we actually have the community report in both English and Spanish. And if you were to go to the website, you could also look at the Spanish version and I have plenty of, we have plenty of hard copies. But of course, it's difficult to get that to you. With that said, let me just highlight the five service areas that are in the report and. Basically, this report is done pretty much on an annual basis. Usually it comes out in the fall. And it's, it's a way of providing the community, our residents with some of the highlights of the services that the county provides. And some of the achievements that we've, that we've, that we've accomplished in the, in the previous year. So. This one is the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty community report. And I, I assume you're able to refer to it, but you can see that the first service area that's documented in the, in the report is community planning. Infrastructure and resources. And again, I'm sure as you folks know, there are various departments and programs within that particular service area. And these include such things as building inspections, a community planning and development. In terms of land use proposals, et cetera, community parks, open spaces and trails, engineering. Landfill and solid waste management, road and bridge, the ranch and those kinds of things. And then you can see some of the highlights, for example, in two thousand and nineteen with regard to the landfill operation. And in our solid waste management department, we were successful in processing quite a bit of green waste, recycling. You can see the pounds of recycling that have been collected and certainly a lot of folks, thank you, a lot of folks use the landfill. And then, of course, one of the areas that's really important is natural resources. And one example of a success in two thousand and nineteen is we were able to complete some of the restoration work. Along the Pouda River near Timnith, the river blocks, open space area there. And I was able to do a site visit and that was, that was really great. So that's our first service area. The ranch is included in there, of course, and I suspect folks are aware that we are making significant progress. In implementing the updated master plan and and we will be looking at breaking ground to do some of the work out there in twenty twenty one. The next area that I'd like to highlight really quickly is public records, information and services. And then that service area, of course, you have the Laramo County Clerk and Recorder, the Treasurer's Office and the Assessor's Office. And you can see, again, you can, you can read it for yourself, but you know, for folks who may not have this in front of them. You can see that with the clerk and recorder, eighty four thousand documents recorded passports processed forty three hundred. Passport photos taken three thousand. And of course, that's, you know, the clerk and recorder is where folks go to get their. Their license plates, their tags and and then, of course, to the credit of our, of Angela Myers. She and her team of us, approximately seven hundred election officials, election judges. Did a really excellent job in, in facilitating this most recent election, which had a record turnout. You can see that the assessor has implemented a new interactive tool that I think provides greater transparency for property owners regarding. A property taxes and and various kinds of. Ways to compare the, you know, the value, you know, the property taxes on their own property and and ones in nearby areas. The county treasurer has done a lot of the work online and you can see some of those results. The next service area is strategic leadership and administrative services. And that's mostly internal stuff, but you know, obviously our, our budget and finance departments are within there and. You know, basically, we're coming close to completing the twenty twenty one budget. That will be adopted December eighteenth by the, the Board of County Commissioners. And as you might imagine. We've had to make some adjustments in light of the, the Cameron Peak wildfire and and certainly deploying resources. To, to, to deal with the COVID nineteen pandemic. But, but you know, our budget folks, our budget department is basically two people. The Budget Director and the Senior, Senior Budget Analyst. And they do a pretty incredible job in terms of putting the budget together, receiving service proposals and all of that. You can see in the document, the twenty twenties budget and we've had to make some adjustments to that. In terms of pulling money from the, the general fund balance of the reserves. For short and long term recovery regarding the Cameron Peak Fire. And then we recently got some numbers from the Laramo County Sheriff's Office regarding fire suppression costs, but. All total between recovery costs, such things as. I'm probably talking too fast. Am I talking too fast, Troy?
Not for me.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that I'm using your time wisely.
We're following along. The, the, the presentation looks great, John. Looks good.
Thank you. Thanks. And thanks for pulling it up. But you know, as far as the, the twenty twenty budget. And and you folks know that we, we operate on an annual budget. It's the calendar year, which of course is different than the state fiscal year. And that sometimes can create some complications. But overall, with the twenty twenty budget, it's, it always has to be balanced. The twenty twenty one budget will be balanced. And as I was trying to say, you know, we've had to make some adjustments, but I think between the. Direct fire suppression costs that were submitted to us from the Laramo County Sheriff's Office. Including the short and long term recovery costs, such things as the county's contribution towards. Emergency watershed protection and and things of that nature. We're looking probably, let's see, nine point two million for recovery costs that were set aside. And I think it's about six point seven million or something for direct fire suppression costs. And 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 all of that money is basically taken out of our reserves because, you know. In the last two years and certainly before my time, we've been very fiscally conservative, you know, in terms of managing the, you know, people's money and and. Despite recessions, despite a previous disaster emergencies, we've been able to build a pretty decent reserve. So that's the twenty twenty budget and that's one of the departments. We have human resources, fleet services, facilities. Information technology. What I'll note very quickly on Troy and colleagues about the. The information technology, you know, one of the. The infrastructure initiatives, it's part of our five year strategic plan. That's a whole nother thing. But is, is our broadband strategic initiative? And we are making progress with, you know, looking at the areas like, for example, Glacier View Meadows and other areas. And I think certainly areas around Wellington and northern Laramo County where there the, the internet speeds are not adequate as far as download and upload speeds. And and so we are making progress in. You know, basically achieving some of the goals of our broadband strategic initiative. And I'll give you one quick example, colleagues. And that is recently, in fact, this morning at our administrative matters meeting, we approved a hundred thousand dollars from COVID relief. Coronavirus relief funds of the fifteen point three million that the county got, and I think Wellington, of course, got some of that. We, a hundred thousand dollars is going to a partnership with Front Range Internet for our infrastructure and technology. That will make available high speed internet for folks that they want to subscribe, even, you know, up in your neck of the woods. And then we're also looking at certain places like Cloverleaf Mobile Home Park, you know, out there on, on I twenty five, you know, past the interstate on highway fourteen. Where we've identified that there are, there's, they're being underserved, you know, and there's families living there. They have kids trying to do online learning. And they typically have a higher rate of, of receiving this public benefits such as SNAP, the food stamp program. And so we, we have developed a, different levels or different tiers of a subsidy program. You know, to see if they're interested in participating and getting access to the, the hardware and then ultimately the monthly cost. So that. I, I think that's pretty exciting. I'll move on to the, the, the next category of service area is public safety. Yes, we have that. And of course, public safety includes alternative sentencing, community corrections, pre trial services. The DA's office, certainly emergency management, which, you know, has been more than busy this, this year. Investigations Coroner, the Laramo County Detention Center. Wildland Fire Management and all of the disaster recovery stuff that we've been, that we've been talking about. And you can, again, you can see some of the, some of the highlights there with the DA's office. You know, there's a big emphasis on, on wellness courts, on, on DUI courts. And, you know, a lot of work being done to try to redirect folks from incarceration. In terms of community corrections, alternative sentencing and all of that. So that's public safety. The, the sheriff's office has done an incredible job. You know, helping to evacuate people, you know, protect life and limb with regard to the Cameron Peak Fire, which. Still is at just under two hundred and nine, nine thousand acres. It continues to be ninety two percent contained, but for all intensive purposes, I think it's under control. You know, but I, I do think there are still some, you know, some hotspots out there. In fact, this morning, we approved a. A resolution or a motion to extend the Laramo County Fire Ban, which was set to expire November thirtieth, next Monday. We extended it for another week and then we would evaluate whether we need to continue that. And certainly all the extraordinary work that Lori Hodges does for Office of Emergency Management. If you're inclined to visit the coroner's office, you can see we have state of the art equipment there. I, I was out there once, but once is probably enough for a while. And then finally moving over to the fifth service area. Thank you very much. That's very helpful. Human and Economic Health Services. And again, you can see our Public Health Department or Health and Environment Department, which is what it's really called. You can see, you know, the normal things that we do are immunizations, you know, things like the WIC program, women, infants, children. Our restaurant inspections, but I'm sure you're well aware, we're happy to answer any questions. I know that's, I received an email from a town trustee Gator and I think I just responded saying I'm happy to speak with him about. The current situation with the COVID nineteen and the, you know, where we're at, where we were moved on that, on the state dial. Dial framework, but the Health and Environment Department, Public Health, as you, again, as you can imagine, has been incredibly busy with trying to figure out how do we balance. Making sure that businesses can, can function and and we're also protecting our public health and safety. So that's the, the Health and Environment, Human Services, you know, the, the child protection, child support, a variety of things that occur. Within our Human Services Department, the Laramo County Office on Aging is really critical in terms of providing. Resources and programs directly and indirectly. And, you know, it's interesting that one of the bills, pieces of legislation that will be considered in the twenty twenty one session. Is a bill that's coming out of Laramo County that has good support from CCI, Colorado Counties Inc. And it's basically dubbed Alternative Program Adult Protective Services. Oh, excuse me, Alternative Responses Adult Protective Services. So. Similar to child protection, which is legislation that I did when I was there. It would, if this is made passed into law, it would basically allow for adult protective services. Case workers to, you know, what, when, when there, a call comes in about an alleged abuse or neglect of. An older adult or an at risk adult, a person with disabilities, for example. There's, there's a training and various risk level tiers. And they determine if it's a low risk or moderate risk, rather than going into an investigation. There, there's reaching out and looking at what resources can be provided, you know, to try to help that older adult. So that's one of the bills that will be in the upcoming session. That's coming out of our Human Services Department, our Adult Protective Services. Economic and Workforce Development, you know, the normal things that they do, but of course, they've been very focused on supporting businesses. Through the, this COVID nineteen pandemic. Again, I'm happy to answer questions there. Most of you should know that our Laramo County Workforce Development Center, they have weekly meetings with businesses to answer questions. There are a variety of resources available to businesses. And again, we can get into, into that if you'd like. Behavioral Health, what's exciting is that, you know, the, the voters passed that in twenty eighteen. And that's one of the departments within, again, Human and Economic Health Services. And you can see some of the numbers there in terms of funds that were dedicated, sales tax funds that were. Deployed out into the community. But this December, we're going to do a, I think it's real or virtual. I don't know. Everything is virtual these days. A groundbreaking to begin the process of building the, I think it's about a twenty eight million dollar. Comprehensive behavioral health facility detox center, you know, in the location that originally was set. So there's a lot of good progress on the behavioral health front. And then you can see veteran services and other kinds of things that are within the, in that service area. Overall, that's what the county does. Five service areas, a variety of departments and programs. And if time allows, I'm, I'm happy to answer a question or two, as long as they're just easy questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, okay. Really appreciate the presentation, Commissioner. This is a good time now for board members to ask our commissioners some good questions. I'll leave it up to the board. Anybody?
Did have a couple of questions, Commissioner Kafalas, and hopefully these are, won't be too hard for you. I appreciate the work that you're doing. I did want to just comment, I appreciate the fact that you continue to come out to our community monthly and just to meet with the citizens and listen to their concerns. It means a lot for me as a local elected official to see you doing that as a county elected official. It really does mean a lot. So I appreciate that. So the two questions, and I'll ask them both and let you answer. The first is, you did mention earlier that Laramo County has been very fiscally conservative. And that's part of the reason we have a good set of fund balances. And so we obviously have new members coming on to the, the Board of Commissioners, so you're going to be the veteran on the board. And so just my question is, is the plan to really encourage that continuance in that in the county? So we retain being in a good financial position. And then the second question is in regards to the interchange that we're looking at near the high school. That's going to be incorporating county roads as well as state highway. Is that something that the county is willing to work with us on as we're continuing to go through that process to get that done?
Thank you, John. And and technically, I think both of those questions were yes or no questions. So the easy, the easy answer for me would be. On, on the first one, yes. And on the second one, yes. You know, certainly, you know, we have two new commissioners coming on. They'll be, they'll take the oath of office on January twelfth. I have. Genuinely appreciated my relationships and and work with the two current commissioners. Of, of course, we've, we've not always agreed on things a hundred percent, but frankly, we've worked, I think overall, we've worked well together. And and so we're going to continue that tradition of, of doing, doing our best to do good governance and, and trying to set aside the political labels. And of course, you know, we have a, a really capable staff. You know, our budget staff, our, our county manager, Linda Hoffman, our assistant county manager, Loretta Volker, and we have a fundamental responsibility to make sure that we're. You know, good stewards of, of the, the, the public treasurer. And as you know, John, and, you know, one of our guiding principles is that we be good stewards of, of the public resources. So I. You know, we, one of the, one of the good things is that related to the budget and, and our ability to have a little more flexibility with our, our general fund balance and also. Helping our employees, we have about nineteen hundred, I think, full time employees in the county. Which I think currently sits at about three hundred and fifty seven thousand people. But with the passage of Amendment B, remember that one, folks, Amendment B, the repeal of the Gallagher Amendment. That's going to have, that has a significant impact on, on the county budget and I know it'll impact, you know, all of our budgets, but. You know, when we were, we had put into the twenty twenty one budget and that we were projecting. That had Amendment B not passed and therefore the residential assessment rate would have, you know, would have been decreased because of the way. The constitutional amendment is set up, we were projecting about a fourteen million dollar revenue loss in twenty twenty two after the. You know, the, the reassessment year and and so forth, but that's not happening now. So the, when we have our. Reassessments next year in, in, in twenty twenty one, residential property will be assessed at the, you know, the seven point one five percent. Residential assessment rate. So that, that, that's actually created some opportunities. To consider options for using some of that general fund balance in the areas of housing, childcare. Interestingly, Commissioner Donnelly has been pushing really hard. And and this is all very preliminary, but we have set aside some money which we can pull back. But Commissioner Donnelly has been looking at this. Like a post secondary education, training, scholarship fund. So we're, we're exploring, you know, some options there. And and certainly childcare is a big deal and certainly housing is a big deal. But, but yes, to the first question and and yes, to the second question, and I. I, I seem to recall there was an update on that from our county engineering folks. Isn't there some progress being made on that intersection from the state? And 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 in terms of what, you know, how they're going to reconfigure that intersection and perhaps put a, I think, some kind of a roundabout and certainly in relation to the schools that are being built.
And I know Mr. Bird would know more and we don't need to get into that. I just, I'm glad to hear the counties in force. But yeah, I don't want to take time because we're not here to talk about that, but I'm, I'm just glad to hear. Your answers to both. That's fantastic news. So thank you very much, Commissioner Kafalas.
Oh, you're welcome, John. That wasn't too bad. I, I. Yeah, are there others? And then I, I can close with some things that I almost, I forgot really quick.
Trustee Kenny.
To add on something that John was discussing about the intersection. Something that could happen now to help with the safety of our community is decreasing the speed limit along Highway one entering Wellington. This is not just for the high school. And regarding the intersection, it is just a dangerous situation in itself. So. If we could talk about that more in detail later, that, that would be a really great thing to improve safety in Wellington.
Yeah, take a note of that one, John. Take note. We're going to need help with that on that with C dot, okay?
Yeah, I'm, I'm certainly willing to help and I, and I know our county engineer, Mark Peterson. You know, we've looked at changing speed limits, but of course, it's a state highway, so there has to be some collaboration between the town, the county. And of course, C dot. So yeah, Rebecca, if you wanted to follow up or Troy with some more specific questions, I can engage Mark Peterson. And and we can certainly work together to, you know, figure out how to address that. What's the current speed limit on Highway one now?
Fifty five.
You said fifty five?
Fifty five.
Well, that's right. I'm afraid sometimes I exceeded. Okay.
Until it gets around the curve as it comes into Wellington and then goes down to forty five and then thirty five.
That's right. So. That's right. So.
That's a real, that's a real opportunity for some, not using a whole lot of funds to get something done right there in the immediate.
I, I do know, again, not to get into it too much, but I know that when we, you know, when the county considers changing speed limits, you know, there's a lot of, there's, um, uh, you know, traffic studies that we do and a variety of other things that help inform, uh, the, the rationale for lowering the speed limit, like on Overland Trail, for example. Uh, that speed limit's been lowered at least once. And, and so, but we can, we can get into that. I, I think, Mayor, um, I should wrap it up because I have a feeling you folks don't want to be.
Absolutely. Sure.
On board thing, although I'm, I'm kind of enjoying this, but I, I want to leave for other folks. I, I mentioned earlier the, um, the Laramo County Community Survey, and I, I wanted to, uh, ask if you could, um, uh, spread the word. And, and if you haven't filled it out yourselves, that you consider filling out the, um, our, our community survey. It's, it's, it takes about 15 minutes, but it's, it's, it provides us, the county, the commissioners with really good feedback. And if you go to, um, uh, laramor.org, you know, our basic website backslash 2020 survey. Uh, you, you, you can access the survey. And we did extend the deadline, um, uh, till December 4th. And, and honestly, it does provide us with some really good feedback. Um, and if you could maybe, uh, if it's appropriate to post a link on your website. And somehow, you know, uh, bring people to that. I know we've gotten a, a bunch of responses from Wellington folks. Or Northern Laramo County folks. So that's one thing. And on the budget thing, um, uh, just to bring to your attention. We have this new interactive tool. It's called Build Your Own Budget. And I know folks who participated in the most recent, uh, Wellington, uh, Buckeye Waverly meeting, because we've combined them. Um, we had Josh Fudge, our Budget Director, talk about that. But Build Your Own Budget is an interactive tool. Laramor.org backslash budget, and then, uh, build hyphen your hyphen own hyphen budget. Uh, it's, it's kind of fun if you, if you want to move more money into commissioner salaries. Oh, no, just kidding. I, I don't believe, I think that's statutorily set. Uh, but, but both of these are an, an effort to try to get input and engage the community and get input. So I think that's all I have. I, I look forward to seeing you folks in person. I look forward to, you know, having our meetings at the T-Bar Inn. And I'm hoping and praying that 2021 will have more opportunities.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, uh, let's move on to our next presentation, uh, Item B. This is going to be a budget discussion review with staff presentations from, um, Jude, our Finance Director. Jude?
Good evening. So let me, I'm sharing my screen. Hopefully tonight I, last time I tried to do two screens, not successful. So, um, in, in order to keep moving, um, forward and try to get our, uh, the 12-8 date at the bottom, that's our goal, to get our budget adopted. And we wanted to review a little bit about where we've been. And where we're going, and then, um, answer some questions from, uh, last week's work session. And so a huge shout out, um, to some trustees that shared those questions with us, uh, to staff who helped us, um, get this information to you. I know these are trying times. So again, um, thank you to everyone for their participation, because this is a very different format where we're not sitting next to one another and can't just answer those questions. So we're going to review a little bit where we were, and then feel free to stop me if we have questions, and we'll make sure that we keep getting them answered for you. So as just a reminder, um, we talked about compensation first. And, um, then we moved on to the operations piece, the general fund and the enterprise funds. And just for a quick reminder to folks, your enterprise funds are operated like a business. And so those monies, and that would be our water fund, our sewer fund, and, um, the drainage fund. Those funds cannot be shared or used in a different, um, to pay salaries like for, uh, you know, different departments. So that's important when you start thinking about what could we do or where could we save money? Is to recognize that enterprise accounts have to be run, um, separately from the general funds. And then, um, last week we had some questions that were given to us. We went back, um, and tried to put those down, and we will get to those in just a second. And then when I'm done, um, Tyler's going to share our capital improvement plans with you. And then Trustee Gator sent, uh, spreadsheet last night with some additional questions, so we'll try to make sure, um, and address those as well. If Tyler doesn't, uh, address them inside of the capital improvement, uh, presentation this evening, we will backtrack and get those answered. And then our next time that we were together, we would hope by 12-8, uh, we have to have it done no later than 12-15. So, uh, that would be a regular scheduled meeting on 12-8 to get that reading in for our budget. So if, when we went back, we had our original discussions were our wages and salaries, and this is just, just the compensation, not, no benefits. So 23.5% of our general fund, um, was covering our wages and salaries. And if you remember, we shared, uh, the Bureau of Labor Statistics. And, um, an article out of the AICPA, which the American Institute of CPAs, industry standards for governments were at about 32.43%. So we're well below that. And then we had the graph where we identified some gaps. And we said, okay, this is what we know for now, and we had asked for those 6.5 positions. Um, recognizing that as we move forward and we have some of these other, uh, pieces in there, we may need in 2022. Um, definitely that graph had some areas on the curve that would need to be filled in. And so we're at about 3.7 with salaries, and we bump up to 4.7, and that's with benefits. And so that's the town side of paying for FICA, workers' comp, retirement, et cetera. And so then the next presentation you heard from the finance staff was our budget discussions running around, um, just the operations piece. We did not, we have not touched on the capital yet. And so again, inside your general fund. Um, that's all of us that work at Town Hall. It's paying for your police services. And then, uh, the street fund, again, taking care of our roads, your water, sewer, and drainage. Again, those are your enterprise funds, and then the park. And that park fund is general fund money again. And so, and just to review, so when we added our benefits, um, this brought us up to about 31%. Again, these are operational funds, and it's important to recognize we should not be using money for capital projects that are, um, if we have like our tap fees and so forth, should not be used for operations or compensation. So we're at about 31%, um, 4.7, that's with our benefits. Industry standards are about 52%, so we're well below that. So we're doing well. And then our operations piece, that's 69% of our budget. We're a service industry. I mean, that's what we have to offer to our folks is taking care of our town. So this, I think we're doing really well. I mean, this is, these are good, good numbers. And then what we have in front of us are the pending capital improvement projects. And some of our strategy and, um, discussions tonight is we're trying to prioritize, um, you know, on a need basis, but also with the amount of, you know, staff that we have, what can we get done? Um, and what can we, um, pay for in one year's time? And then again, just to try to remember that we're, we're working towards that December 8th date. So these are the questions, and thank you, Trustee Gator, for sharing these with us, because it gives us an opportunity to share them with everyone out there, um, and not just answer them on a one-by-one. So, um, and I'll run through these, and again, just stop me at any point if we need to circle back or get additional information. So FB, that appears on our budget, and it stands for, uh, Fund Balance. And then his second part of the question was the $3 million over revenues, uh, that we, we show negative. This is in every fund. It's the same. Is we have some pretty large capital projects. And if you drop those into the budget, that will show that we would be using reserves. And again, that is very appropriate to use your reserves, um, and dip into your fund balances for capital projects. You would never, ever want to be starting to looking into those reserves. For your salaries and operations. And then second question, Legislative Board Outreach, what was that? Um, it's your Main Street program at 75. There was 5,000 for the Eagles, and then the, after last, um, the 6,800 when we heard from the chamber. We bumped that back in there so that $6,800 was carried forward, um, for the small business support. And then the position of the court clerk, um, why was it eliminated? Uh, we, we simply moved it. We, um, when I came onboard, started looking at the finance, and one of our discussions was kind of to realign, uh, some of the duties inside finance. We brought payroll over to finance. We'd like to do the payroll or the accounts payable with purchasing, and then Tyler and I will take the grants. And it's just a better, I think we're going to be able to have better customer service internally and externally. And then those court duties would shift over to be with the town clerk. They're really not, um, financial in any way. And so, um, those will shift over in to with Crystal. Uh, the finance salaries went up, but benefits went down. This, uh, appears in every budget. It might just be more apparent in some, but, um, our cost of our benefits went down. Our health insurance went down when you guys changed providers last year. And then, um, this year Lori was able to only get, I mean, a 1% increase. That's, it's amazing. It's excellent, given what, you know. Uh, I talked to some other finance directors, and they were seeing anywhere between 22 and 29% increases. So that was great. And then the other piece that you will sometimes see inside of a budget is we have several staff members, and if their, um, spouse has coverage. They may not have, uh, healthcare. And so that will show up in their benefits. And when we only have, uh, small departments and you have two or three people. That becomes pretty apparent. And so it wasn't that the benefits went down in any way. It was simply that, um, I mean, we're not offering less to our employees. It was just the cost of the, of the medical piece. And then, uh, finance, office space rental decreased. Uh, you, we had two large purchases, the Harrison House and the Green House. So previously we were paying for some space, and now we're not. Uh, planning, uh, travel and training. And this is consistent in many, um, it came up in several departments, but I did, uh, want to address them. So all of us that have either licenses or like the operators, um, for our water and sewer, they all have licenses that we have to can be, um, do our continuing education for. So this year, hopefully, most everyone is doing it virtually. Um, but sometimes, and especially, um, taking advantage of some of those classes, you get some great education, um, by traveling a pretty short distance. And you also get the opportunity to visit with other people that do the same thing that you do. Um, so I've had some great conversations with the other finance directors over the years, and I'm sure the same is true for the planners and the water operators, et cetera. Um, the law enforcement piece, um, this contract, the, the monies that you see in there, I've had long conversations with Officer Reardon, um, as has Kelly, and we felt that it would better be. Um, so it's in there, um, as far as the services, and we made sure that we, we talked with, um, Officer Reardon. But when the new town administrator comes onboard, I think that's a conversation that she should probably be having with them. Um, and then revolving a little bit maybe around the services that we see. And so whoopsie, one, one too fast. Um, and then the public works, it was the same, same conversation about the training, making sure that we're keeping all of our licenses current. Um, then on the general use, we did have a raise in materials, um, Town Hall, and as some of the, all of the facilities actually are pretty old. So we bumped this up for some repairs that are, would be under 5,000. So we have some pretty big tears in carpets and stuff, and if we can get by knowing that we are definitely looking at moving, sometimes it does work. Especially back in the private areas, if we want to put duct tape over it. But if we have something up closer where the public is, we may need to do, um, a little bit of repair. And so that's what that is. We put a little bit more money in there. Um, the library, originally there was a decrease in your materials and your supplies. Um, what was driving the decrease? We didn't get this budget sheet back, and so we have since revised that. Long conversations with Molly about what they needed and how were they going to try to get there? And then Lori has brought some people back onboard. So the budget that you have that was attached on the revised agenda, um, should reflect those changes. Um, transfers, I believe, Trustee Gator's converse, or question really was, what is this? And, um, it's really just, it's an allocation of sharing the salaries. And so for an example, for an enterprise fund, um, for like the water and the sewer. If they were a business that sat all by themselves, they would somehow have to generate water bills. They would have to somehow pay somebody to be doing the cash receipting when all of those checks came in. And so what that is, is an allocation across all of the different things. Or all the different departments, and it's, it's basically paying for the finance when we, um, you know, send out the water bills. And for your time and for, um, the town administrator's time to review the packet, so forth and so on. And, you know, it's, it goes across. And Tyler and I have looked at that, and when I originally came onboard, I thought, boy, this is, um, high. But when I went in there and I looked at it, it's actually even part of your, um, like your general liability insurance is split out in there. And so I do think in the future, we could break some of those pieces out, so it was a little bit more transparent. But that is what the transfer in and out, it's a due-to-do-from account. And so it's just a cost sharing. Uh, in the sewer, why is there a change? Um, again, it's a different allocation. And some of the salaries, we have added positions, and, um, when we did a reset on some of those salaries that were inside of there, it changed that number. Um, the drainage, authority utility payments, what is this for? This is your box elder agreement. And I know that, um, as we move forward in a year or so, we will be having a lot more discussions about that. But that is, that is that MOU that's already in place. Um, and thank you, Trustee McDonald, for this question. We went back and I wanted to double check. And so the good news is these, these dates are the same, whether you're, um, a home rule or not. And so we have, we just need to publish, um, when we're going to have that reading, um, for the budget. So Crystal's done that. And, um, again, our goal is the 8th of December, and if we would need to move that, we would need to republish. But at this point, that's, um, the date we're hoping to do that. And then the piece that we visited about last week was, um, what would it take in order to raise or shift some of this burden of, um, the debt service that's going to be for our plant? Um, what would it take to get some of that shifted over to the new construction? And so I just did a couple little scenarios there. And you can see, we, I kept the number of permits in the first one, because, uh, based off of our capacity. We set 100 homes. And so right now, um, you still have those three old loans, 1982, 84, and 2001. So you have a little bit of old debt service, but this is the new one. So about 50%, if we bump those tap fees to 7,500, um, we would be at 50%. And you can see if we went to eight, it would go up a little bit, uh, to 53, 8,500 would bring us up to about 56.7. And then at nine, um, that would shift to 60%. And so the other variable would, would be post-COVID, we don't know. Maybe we could have 125 permits. Um, and if we did that, that would shift that number up to 62.5, still staying at the 7,500. If we went to 8,000, that would bump it up to 66.7, and the 8,500 would take us up to a tick over a million. And so, again, as you can see, we keep going, and that burden, we would go clear up to the 75%. But again, the things that we don't know, um, are, you know, the things that we can change are the tap fees and the number of permits. And so being, uh, we want to be conservative. We do not want to stress that existing plant. We do not want to risk having a catastrophic failure, which we would, you know, put us in a pretty serious bind. So being very conservative, we're going to use the number 100. We don't know post-COVID. If our water usage goes down, people return to work, we can do some conservation efforts, and we think we can bring on more homes. Certainly that's a conversation that we would have. Um, you know, Bob would, would have to do that assessment and say, do we think we can do that? So that kind of answers your question. Um, Tyler is going to, uh, share with us in a minute or so, um, what that looks like. And for demonstration purposes, we, uh, we use the 7,500. And then, um, the gray piece up here, I'm going to have Bob, um, touch base with you on. The yellow ones, um, Lori has a short presentation when I'm done. Um, and she's going to visit with you about positions, and I don't want to, um, get lost in the weeds tonight and cover the same thing twice, so we're going to keep moving. And then the green piece, um, Tyler's going to be, uh, visiting with us tonight about the capital improvements. And so the yellow will be answered by Lori, the green. And so the yellow will be answered by Lori, the green by Tyler. And then I'm going to turn this over for a second to Bob. And then if anybody has questions before I do that, please let me know.
All members.
Just had a quick question on the, and thank you very much Jude for putting together a presentation. With the percentages on the, were those considering those additional six point five FTE for the, where we're going to be at with the percentages of budget that's going to be into the salaries and compensation?
Yes. Okay. So this one right here, so the fifty-three point seven five, that was with the proposed six point five positions.
And does that also include the adjustments to now having a town administrator and with the adjusted salary for that position as well?
Correct. Every time we get new information, we love it because it just lets us be a little bit more accurate. And then some of the conversations as we move through. So this four point seven number, after we keep getting more information with our medical, we were able to adjust that and not use an estimate. So yeah, these are darn accurate as we can get today.
Perfect. And then the other question and Mr. Bird, if he could maybe work on this while we're going through the other presentations, but could you get us a number of permits that were issued for homes in two thousand and twenty? Just to kind of give us an idea when we're saying we're going to be conservative with one hundred, what does that look like compared to what was permitted this year?
And I think Cody, are you there? I think we've talked about this. I think it's like two thirty-eight. So.
Sorry Jude, this is Cody, Bird Planning Director. Year to date, we're around two hundred and seventy, single family homes. So, and we think that's probably about the max we're going to hit this year. But that's current year. I can look, look for future or excuse me, prior years, if that's helpful as well.
That's good. Thank you very much.
Okay, Bob. Yep, Bob Taggart.
Okay, I'm at, this is Bob Gowing, Public Works Director. I see three questions here. Professional services, what is this for? That's for typically kind of unforeseen professional services, say it's geotechnical report we need. Structural design, if we need a little piece of structural design, surveying, we've gotten a little bit of surveying done this past year through this number. So this is more kind of things that come up during the year. It's a fairly small amount, but if we don't budget a little bit for that and it comes up, we've got to come back with a budget amendment. So that's a, that's a multi-week or even multi-month process to do that. So in general, this is a number for those kind of I don't want to say miscellaneous because people may think that means slush, but it's, it's valid projects that come up that we need to take care of. The increase in sludge removal cost, this was one of those deferred maintenance items that we got on top of this year. The sludge really should be removed every one or two years, but when I got here, I found that it hadn't been removed for about four years. So we went ahead and did that. And as you might imagine, that was quite a bit more sludge than than what we had planned or the, you know, we would have had if we'd been on top of this before. So DJ in specific, specifically got on top of this and frankly, got a pretty good deal for us considering how much sludge we had out there at the plant. Highlight that raw water increases the main change. That is certainly one of the biggest changes in the, in the water fund. And again, I mean, we can't point at COVID for everything, but certainly the forty percent or so increase in just volumetric water use this year. I think you can point at COVID for that, more people staying at home and to be expected when you're kind of a bedroom community such as ourselves. Any, any follow-up questions on those for me?
Not from my end. Thank you very much, Mr. Gowing. I very much appreciate those answers.
Anyone else? Thank you, Bob.
I'm going to stop sharing. Lori is going to visit with us about the positions.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So in your packet tonight, I did put all of the positions and a brief summary for your review, just to help us remember what it is each of those positions is meant to support or fulfill. I understand too that trustee Gator had several questions about a couple of those positions. And technically they can all kind of be answered together based on the summaries that I've prepared for you for this presentation. So the management analyst, as you can see, it, the title of the position is not a helpful title. It makes you think that there's someone in a cubicle sitting around crunching numbers, doing spreadsheets all day. And that is not a position that we really need right now. That's for finance to do and they do a great job of it. Thank you, finance. But this management analyst position is really one of the few positions that will serve administration and it serves it at a very high level. This person is privy to many confidential activities, sensitive activities, very political activities at times. They fill in for leadership and department heads when needed. They sit in on needed county or other board or commission meetings on behalf of an administrator or someone like that on the days when they're double and triple booked. This person handles great responsibility with projects, very sensitive projects, very important projects, ones that are very research driven. So this person is an overall Jane, Jack of all trades and can slip in and slip out as needed based upon demands. And so just in this short period of time that we have had a town intern working for the town, that person has fulfilled this role. And by having that person move around and fill in, especially in departments where we're, we're still understaffed, that has been such a huge support to all of our leadership team. And, and I personally in HR have received a great deal of benefit from this. As have all of the other departments. So for the town and for the leadership team, this is a very high and needed request. And we do hope that you will sincerely consider it for our benefit because it does keep us moving, moving forward and much more quickly than we would have otherwise. Because few of us have capacity to handle all the things that are on that summary. With respect to the director of parks and recreation, I know we had a very wonderful conversation last time we met and I appreciated all of your feedback. And, and I understood that some of you felt we should still go for the director. And I also thought that some of you might still be leaning maybe towards the manager of parks and recreation position, which was fiscally less expensive, but could still allow us to handle the same roles and move parks out of public works and, and allow us to start building that rec department, which you know, I so enthusiastically said is really the heartbeat of our town in many ways. So based on the position descriptions and summaries that you saw and see in this presentation and also our previous discussions on the one tonight, I'm here to try to address any other questions you might have about the positions that we have requested. And why we're trying to be proactive, not reactive, why we're trying to create some depth so that we can provide cross-training in various areas, why we're trying to relieve a sense of exhaustion that comes across staff that are understaffed in various departments. Again, trying to prevent turnover so that people have realistic job expectations when they come on to the town. And when, when employees do leave, that I'm not writing down notes that are negative and criticism about there is too much work and not enough support. And the last most important piece is by having adequate staffing, we don't have to be delayed in projects. We don't have to be delayed in completions or timelines. We're actually able to move forward in a very progressive and timely manner for all of the tasks that the town needs to get done. So this, this is really a great first step towards being a bit more proactive in our staffing and getting us in front of the train instead of running behind it. So I'm here to answer any questions that I possibly can.
Any questions?
So I thank you very much for putting this together, Ms. Woodruff. It's a fantastic explanation of the positions is very helpful. A couple of questions. The first one was in regards to the IT technician. I know some of the thought process with that was we could actually offset some of the costs. Is that reflected in the budget currently with our IT costs or has that not benefited?
We can't offset that yet, partly because when that person first comes on trustee Gator, they are going to have to do a lot of back work in order to catch us up to the point at which we can start to turn a profit for him, from having hired the position. In other words, we don't have control of our inventory. We haven't put together any kind of recycling process. We have machines that are ancient that are falling apart. We hold them together with pin cushions and glue and tape. And, and so some of this is actually going to create a little cost. But once we get on top of it, now we can begin to really be proactive about our contract buying when we do replacement cycling for computers and those types of things. We can look for the most beneficial contracts that help the town. When I first came on in my position, I noted that a great deal of my effort wasn't forward, it was backward. I had to go back and fix so many things that were done in errors or that left the town in a litigious situation that exposed the town toward lawsuits and liabilities, records management and other types of things. So I spent a great deal of time and energy going backwards, which means it's very hard to push forward and start to produce cost savings. But even with that, the, the presentation that Judy just presented, we moved from being a fully insured medical or having fully insured medical provisions for our town staff to being self-insured. And that single step has saved the town over one hundred thousand dollars this year and counting. Now, is that fantastic? Yes. But could it be more? Yes. Can we be more proactive? Yes. But we have to have the time and energy to get forward so that we can look and guard and see where the town's money is going and evaluate it. And is this really the best use? Is there a better way of handling our problem or issue over here? And so the IT technician is going to have the same set of circumstances. They're going to have to go backward first, turn around, create the foundation and then move the town forward. And yes, there will be savings in the future trustee Gator, I guarantee it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And then kind of a similar question with the building official. I know the thought process was they can take on some of the work that we're outsourcing. Will we be able to start seeing those? Or is it going to be a similar situation where we're seeing a delay in that cost savings?
I think that would be a great question for Cody Bird. Cody?
There we go. I'm sorry. I was having trouble with the mute button. So this is Cody Bird, Planning Director. And I think to the, to the question, Mr. Gator, we would expect to see some cost savings over time by in-house and some of these services. We would not expect to see that in the initial year because a lot of our expenses are going to SafeBolt as a third-party contractor. One person is not going to be able to take on all of the work that a team of professionals at SafeBolt provides. So the first year is going to build in year and then we'd see some cost savings in second and subsequent years.
Thank you very much. And then I guess my final question with these positions is I, I have some pretty serious concerns. I shared these with town staff in my email about just what this next year is going to look like and the amount of costs that we're looking at between additional staffing as well as projects that are upcoming. And I know one of the discussions was whether we go with the hundred and, or I think it was a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to have a director of parks and recreation or forty-five thousand dollars increase to have a manager that can manage, that can still allow, seems like several of those. So kind of what I keep hearing is the management analyst position is one of the ones that I'm struggling to justify, but I'm hearing. So in your opinion, you know what's going on. Would it be more valuable for us to take that eighty thousand dollars to get a director of parks and recreation instead of a manager? Or would it be better to take those funds and use that to put in the management analyst position if we had to choose between those two?
I'm speaking on behalf of, hopefully the leadership team and definitely the way I would see our staffing needing to go at this juncture. I think if we were able to move towards the manager of parks and recreation and channel money to preserve the management analyst position, that that would be a true win for the town in both areas. That the goal ultimately in future years would be to move to the director of parks and recreation, especially as COVID releases us and we are able to really drive that programming for the town and the residents. But as a first great step, that would be a total win on both sides. Staff would appreciate both of those.
Okay. So I guess I, I don't have any further questions from Ms. Woodruff. My comment to the board would be, I know that there was a lot of support for going the direction of doing the director. My ask would just be that if we can go this position, I understand future and I don't have a problem with going that route down the road. I just think with the issues that we have currently with our infrastructure, those need to be the primary focus as well as with COVID nineteen, so much is shut down that we can't even do. I think that having that manager to just start the process of integrating parks into the recreation, we can have that person do that. And then look at next year's budget where hopefully things have stabilized. We've gotten some of this, you know, massive construction underway. And then we can look at bringing on that parks department at that time and rather use those funds in this case to maybe go with the management analyst. So that's just my thought and ask to the board, because I know I was kind of the one who's really pushing back to say, let's try to keep these costs down as much as we can.
I would, this is part of me, this is trustee Whitehouse. I would concur with trustee Gator's comments that I, I do think the HR special, not HR, the management analyst is, is, is a definite need. So I agree with his comments.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm still under the impression that we need both. We need the analysts and we also need the director, parks and rec. I think those are two such very valuable pieces to our community. And rather than slapping a Band-Aid on it, I think we should fix it and set us up for success in the future. I think now is the time to do that. So I, I'm still for both of those positions.
Ms. Woodruff? Understanding that we budget for a director type position, but knowing kind of the boards, that there's some apprehension about maybe taking that big step is what would the timeline look like for onboarding that? That level going from that manager to director level, would we be looking at first quarter or fourth quarter? Twenty twenty, I mean, maybe that, that helps a little.
It, it definitely can help. That is one of the staffing strategies that HR departments often use is that if we get a position approved and and there are cost concerns, that we don't try to fill that position on January first, that indeed we can wait a little bit further into the year. And in fact, we could wait maybe halfway through the year. Potentially what we could do is move to the manager of parks and recreation for the first two quarters of the year. That allows us to buy some time through the COVID process. Hopefully we drop out of red. We get more into summer and spring where there's a ton of programming going on. We've had some time to integrate the parks department. We've allowed some more activity with PAB. There, there's some really good foundational activity going on there. There's been some cost savings. And then we look at the recruitment perhaps over the summer months for a director that can begin to take us into the new fall, winter and spring seasons of the following year. Again, a great cost-saving strategy, but it allows us to take the steps a little bit more slowly. Potentially that's a great idea.
Thank you. That answers my question. I would be supportive of both the director and the management analyst role.
Anyone else?
It is, my preference would still be to do the manager for the full year, but I would be amenable if we can maybe work something into where we're, we're moving later into the year. Because again, that gives us a chance, right? If, if my concerns about lockdowns and things causing problems don't come to fruition and everything is all well and great in March and April, and we have flush of money, then I'm all in. But I, I like that idea of maybe if we can split it to where you know, if things are really getting pretty ugly, maybe we say, okay, we hold off and stay with the management position. So I, I again, would prefer to go the whole year, but I would be open to that possibility as well.
Would it be agreeable then to the board if we went ahead and moved towards the manager of parks and recreation for at least the first quarter? That I would come back to the board after that quarter, we could begin to look at where we are financially to see how that transition is going, give you a report of the progress. We would definitely have COVID information by then to see if it justifies us potentially moving into the director role by the second quarter. If not, I could come back after the end of the second quarter and we could repeat this process until we all felt comfortable that it was time to move from the manager position to the director level.
I'm good with moving.
Trustee Kenny, I love your thumbs up.
Okay.
I'd be very happy to do that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Good presentation.
Thank you all.
Yeah. All right. Looks like we're moving on to item C. Is that correct? Tyler, are you ready? Okay, let's hear it.
Pull it up real quick. Right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Board Trustees, Tyler Sexton, Assistant Finance Director. And I'm presenting the Wellington Utility Rate Model Update. I want to give you guys a little background before jumping to the presentation. So April twenty-third of twenty nineteen, the board approved water and current conduct a utility rate study for the town's water wastewater and stormwater rates. Uh, the findings of this study were presented to the board on March seventeenth of twenty twenty. And then the board selected scenario two that was presented on September fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty board meeting. The scenario increased the base rates to thirty-five dollars on October first of twenty twenty. And when increase again to sixty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents on January first of twenty twenty-one. So discussing the previous presentations, the three major factors when considering the utility rates is ones, the total users and growth, uh, choose the capital improvement projects or debt service. And then three is the raw water costs. So um, preparing for, you know, the new budget cycle, it's pretty standard practice for uh, for us to revisit the model. It's current assumptions and update if necessary. So this presentation will will discuss our findings, what we adjusted and how we how this will affect the twenty twenty-one user rates. So when looking at the original model and assumptions, uh, impact fees were excluded in the calculation of the user rates. The rationale was uh, due to being a one-time fee, best practice would recommend not including them in long-term projections. Uh, this assumption would have been sustainable, but with the limited capacity of the current water plant um, and the idea of a strategic smart growth pattern, we have decreased the numbers of new users than the original model anticipated. Uh, finance has discussed this topic with uh, both um, Bob Gowing, Public Works Director and Cody Byrd, Town Planner. And we conclude that we can handle about two percent growth for the next three years or roughly a thousand homes for the next five. In finance, we always err on the side of conservation conservatism. And so we we project out about seven hundred and fifty new homes in our models. We also looked at the current fund balance policy, which required, you know, commitment of two years debt service, uh, subsequent years capital improvement and then um, twenty-five percent of revenues. We reduced that to thirty-five percent, thirty-three percent of expenditures or the hundred and ten percent of debt service, whichever was larger. So this slide shows you a comparison of the original data or original model presented to you on September fifteenth. Um, compared to the updated model with figures from the twenty twenty-one draft budget and the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five uh, capital improvement plan. I've highlighted one of the major differences between the two models. Uh, the CIP projects haven't increased significantly. The original assumption was roughly around one point six million and then with the updated CIPs were approaching approximately seven million. So this slide shows um, the revenue comparison of the original model again presented on the fifteenth of uh, September. I've highlighted the difference in revenues in red. Um, a major difference between the two models is we have a more consistent base rate uh, for the next three years, but you also see a twenty-five percent increase in the tiers for the next five years. So this slide is intended to explain kind of why we had to include the impact fees into our water calculation. So as you can see, the original model every year but twenty twenty-one, we were able to cover all costs, including capital projects with the incoming revenues. With the updated model, we have approximately six point five million dollars deficit in the next three years. Um, in order to absorb these costs and maintain our fund balance, we had to include the impact fees. And so this model is assuming the impact fee increases from fifty-five hundred to seventy-five hundred with a two hundred dollar increase per year for the next five years. And then this is kind of just a recap. This is the the slide of the original presented on the September fifteenth board meeting. Uh, and then this is the this is the update graph. So it maintains a sixty-six dollar base rate for the next three years uh, with a decrease to fifty-five dollars in twenty twenty-four and then fifty dollars in twenty twenty-five. So the decrease will happen because the new plant is estimated to be uh, complete during that time, which will allow us to grow. Uh, this will allow us to collect more impact fees and spread the operational costs among more users. So the big question is, why did it change? And I narrowed it basically down to four factors. So the first one is in the model, we overestimated our future customers. So the model assumed about three thousand five hundred twenty-eight additional users than we currently are having or projected out. To put that perspective, if we charge the sixty-six dollar base rate, just alone on the connections alone would be two point eight million dollars. The second one is the model forecast larger fixed and volumetric revenues than we are currently projecting. And it's very similar to, you know, the first point is that less users mean less use resulting in less revenues. And then number three, oh, sorry, number three. Um, the capital projects were, you know, approximately seven million dollars more than we anticipated. Again, you know, larger costs spread over a smaller group. Um, expect to increase. When you do that, you're expecting to see increases in fixed cost or like the base rates and or a dip into fund balance is kind of what we're doing on this this scenario. And then the fourth one, the model anticipated a zero growth, uh, zero restrictions to growth. And so the board has discussed the idea of smart and strategic growth plan. So with slowing development will cause current users take on more of that cost. And so going forward, you know, our plan and finances to really track this on a quarterly basis. Um, now that we have new updated numbers, new twenty-one budget, um, we are definitely going to be looking at, you know, how many users we bring on, what our uses costs are and how far we are on the CIP projects to really see if we're um, charging the the appropriate amount to all the users going forward. So with that said, any questions?
Any questions, guys?
So what was driving that significant uh, increase in the CIPs over what was before? Was it just a wrong assumption in what we were going to be charged? And then so that's the first part. Then the second part of the same question is are some of these things that we're seeing that CIP part of the plant expansion or is this all separate from the plant expansion costs?
So I, you know, we'll definitely be discussing a lot of the what changed in the twenty twenty-one CIP. You know, I I refer to Bob if he has any insight from the previous stuff to now. Um, but all those with the model, I am excluding the funding that we we've got for the loan. So I'm excluding the, you know, the um, a good chunk of the water treatment plant um, expansion because we're already included in the debt service. So to add that would be double counting. So it's specifically unfunded. Um, monies for, you know, ongoing projects, so.
And if I can add a little bit to that, I think what we're saying this year with some of the projects that got um, deferred because of our um, issues with getting two projects for obvious reasons. A lot of that has rolled over. So that basically is being shown as additional budget in um, in next year. So I think that if um, and Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong, but the comparison, the base number is from the the five-year plan from last year. Is that correct? Yeah, so I think what this doesn't really reflect is all the CIP money that we are not spending this year that we will be spending next year, assuming that we're all pale and healthy and ready to roll.
Okay, so i- in essence, if I'm understanding correctly, a a portion of, I don't know exactly how much, maybe we can cover this when we get to the CIP was already previously approved funds that were in the budget for twenty twenty that were not utilized. So they're now sitting in fund balance and available for use. And we're just basically requesting to use those funds now in twenty twenty-one. Is that a correct understanding for some, at least a portion of these CIPs?
Yes, that is correct for a portion of these. I I think that there's also just the the fact that that the base number that Tyler's comparing this to was a future number when that was originally developed for the twenty twenty budget. And we do tend to pay more attention to the twenty to the this, the next year's column in the five-year plan because that's what actually gets budgeted, right? Everything else is kind of a working document in terms of projections for future costs. So that combined with what we know now that frankly, we didn't know uh, a year and a half ago when we put that number together, that's a long time in terms of Wellington infrastructure. So um, those two factors are the primary factors where, you know, that that would cause this apparent increase in CIP budget.
Other comment?
I did also have a concern, and this is actually something that was brought up to me by a citizen. Um, about two weeks ago, we had a phone conversation and she was incredibly concerned about the rate increases. And so it was um, a little bit concerning to me that um, with the updated model, if I recall correctly, the base rate goes up slightly less, but then it stays at a higher rate for longer. And then we add on to that, we're also seeing an additional increase beyond what was originally set out in the tiers. Um, which I I think is better to shift more of the cost into the tiers for future. Um, because then we can charge people based on what they're actually using. I think that's a fantastic way to go. The concern I have though is that it looks to me like we're actually going to be increasing the expenses significantly because we're going to keep the base rate higher longer. And then we're also going to be adding to that an additional increase um, to the tiers. So that that was a little concerning to me um, to see that because that was something that was specifically brought up by the citizen is they have concerns that, well, the town is going to keep hiking our water rates up and it's never going to come back down. And so that was a concern that I'd like to make sure that we address that because I don't want it to become something. And this is where a lot of my concern will come in with the CIP projects is as we were just discussing those CIP projects directly tie into the rates that we are going to be charging our um, water users.
Tyler, you want to take a stab at that?
Uh, sure. Yeah. Um, so the the long tier plan. So yeah, if you look at, you know, kind of the last model and this model, there really isn't much difference. I think it's a three dollar difference when it's, you know, you do the whole across the board. So technically, you know, she is correct when she says that nothing's really changed. Um, the big difference is I know we've looked at is it's this next three years and that's kind of where we've kind of looked at and that's going to reevaluate a lot of things. Like when Judy said, you know, we're going to be tacking on, you know, that's that that fee for, you know, sixteen or seventeen dollars where we decide on. Um, that will go away in, you know, twenty twenty-four. The the big reason is because, you know, when you, when you the strict amount of growth that we have, those impact fees, you know, we can't collect on that and we can't have the users that we anticipate to kind of share those costs. And so if you can get past twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and we really keep, you know, pre eye track on what we're spending. Once we're, we have the new plan on board, you know, we should be able to expand, bring those impact fees and, you know, I put in this model, I put the fifty dollars in there just to kind of like, but you can see where our fund balance lands. Um, the fund balance comes in at on that last year at, you know, almost four point seven million dollars. And so right now, our current fund balance policy, we'd only need roughly about one point six. So, you know, I didn't want to put, you know, thirty or forty dollars on there just to get their hopes up. But, you know, if anything goes according to plan, there really could be a a time where we see, you know, a thirty-dollar base rate again or something less if we allow, you know, the growth to continue and we plan properly. So um, the next three years is kind of what I've kind of in Judy and we've been looking at mostly trying to get through there because once the plant comes on board, we have a lot more options and that's kind of what we've been trying to do. And so, you know, I don't want to put a real low base rate because, you know, everyone looks at that and um, but I, you know, I do anticipate it going down, you know, it just the numbers alone. Um, you'll see you add on another two hundred, two hundred fifty homes. Our fund balance is going to be restored quite quickly. So.
Thank you very much. And yeah, I just like this to make sure that we're very cognizant of that as we're moving forward.
Absolutely.
We're going to do quarterly updates. That's right, quarterly update. I probably picked the sixty-six dollar base rate because it was a bit more palatable. A little more consistent and average. I know it's an increase, but it was it was better to the board than going with the the big shock up front.
And we did the tier structure, just, you know, that's kind of where we're gearing towards. And I see, you know, everyone in finance, even Bob is looking at once we kind of get this structure figured out, we need to start charging appropriately for the usage. And so that just kind of gets them in the trend. Um, and so again, these are five-year projections. We
Right.
You know, the model's constantly, everything's changing. So we're just trying to keep up on it and bring to you guys, give you guys the most accurate information. So.
And I think that, like I said, the tier move is, I think, where we should be going, but where the challenge is, is we have to make sure that we're not coupling a tier increase. And I get it, next three years, I get that. But we need to make sure what's not happening is we're coupling a tier increase with the same base rate. It's like if we're going to be charging more in the tier, then we should be decreasing that base rate. So we get to a point where we can be charging those who are using the water. You know, I have a family of eight. If I'm using a ton of water, I should be paying more than a family of two or three. Um, and that's really how it should work. And then we can actually be charging those who are using it more appropriately. But we just need to make sure that we're not having both at the same time.
Yeah. The goal of conservation. So if we if we are ever actually trying to reward people and and push for conservation, we have to charge per usage. More specifically that way. So I think it makes sense to switch it that that in that direction later on. So I agree.
Yeah, I see that coming um, rather quickly with the new rates coming out. We're getting more data on what people are doing in their conservation. We don't have a ton right now, but the nice thing about that model is what we got is there's a lot of flexibility. And so that is something I'm very much um, pushing towards. So you will see something coming, you know, as of course, keep going. We'll see what we can do on adapting those rates that set more of a tier, you know, so.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I guess we can move on now to our CIP. Let's get into that. Tyler.
See. Let me pull this up. There we go. All right. So so again, I'll just do a quick background of the capital improvement plan. So the town of Wellington's capital improvement plan contains, you know, all the capital projects, uh, equipment purchases and major studies for the town um, in conjunction with construction and completion schedules and consort with the financial planning. So the plan provides a working blueprint for uh, sustaining and improving the community's uh, infrastructure. It can uh, according to strategic planning, uh, financial capacity and physical development. So the CIP is the the epicenter for the planning and public works and finance department. So this first page, um, this one kind of just gives you the quick uh, priority levels that we kind of rate the projects. So within the descriptions, each each project will be labeled based on this criteria. And then this next one is pretty, is it just um, the summary of all revenues and expenses for the twenty twenty-one. So I've highlighted all the new projects in green. These are strictly for the twenty twenty-one budget. So as you can see, we have twenty-one million sixty-nine thousand and ninety dollars potentially budgeted for the twenty twenty-one year. And all of them are broken out uh, between different have different uh, GFs for general fund, SS for street fund, uh, WF water fund, um, WD is uh, drainage fund and WWF is wastewater fund and then PF parks fund. Um, so these are the individual sheets. I can zoom in, maybe that can help. There we go. It's kind of small. Uh, there's a lot on here. So this is a pretty common theme across all the sheets for anyone who, you know, any new board members or any general people from the public. This is kind of how we break out our capital. uh, general people from the public. This is kind of how we break out our capital uh, improvement plan. So on the, on the top, we have all the revenues that we collect for this one. It's the general fund. You see the property sales, building news, and that goes all the way down. Uh, all the transfers we receive from the other funds for the supporting services brings us to your total 7,228,938 dollars for the 2021 budget. And again, we project those out all across 2025. And then we take the 21, the draft budget, we plop that in for 7.1. And so then when we have 93,175 dollars additional for any capital improvements, debt service or anything else, and that you're going to see that pretty common across the, all the other ones. And again, I highlighted the new ones in green. And so you can see all these sheets are, you know, broken out. We were looking prior year, we spent 378,000. Uh, this year we're looking to spend roughly 1.7 and then you can see it going throughout the years. So in the last portion, you have any grants. Um, so for some of these projects, you know, the DOLA town hall construction, we believe we can get some grants uh, for that. So that's where we get reimbursements. And then this last part is the debt service. If we do anticipate possibly going out for a bond or some, you know, debt, I anticipate some debt service you might have to pay. And so the big thing on these, on these capital projects and these sheets is you're looking at the 2020 fund balance. That tells you roughly how many, how much funds available we have, you know, in reserves for these huge capital projects. And right now we have 7.4 million and um, available funds after if we were to spend all the money, do all those projects, we'd still have 5.7 million. And with our new up, potentially updated um, fund balance reserves, we only require 2.3. So you can see across the funds and all that's kind of what you're looking for. You're going to really want to li- look at the available funds and um, how much are required are. And so that kind of gives you a quick snapshot of how the funds doing um, projects we're looking to do and if we can fund it. So that's a quick overview. If you guys have any specific questions, I know staff is here to answer them. And we also have the description sheets on the back, which should kind of give you an overview of kind of why they asked for the pricing and everything else. So I wasn't planning on going sheet by sheet, but it's really up to you guys. If you guys want to fire off any questions or any specific things you have on this, uh, we're here to answer any.
Let me, let me see if I can help tee this up a little bit. Cause I, I know uh, we have had some uh, several lists of specific items that I think were brought up uh, by the, by trustee Gator and myself and a few others. Might be nice to um, kind of hammer those one-on-one real quick. And he's just a quick explanation. You know, I don't want to go into, I don't think it's necessary to go into it uh, to the uh, you know, too deep, but just a quick explanation of yes, no, why? That is it necessary, that sort of thing. Uh, with that being said, um, maybe I ought to just head this up real quick, uh, if you think, and, and you just see Tyler, if you can give me a a, a quick rundown and, and um, see what you think about the merits of each one of these. And uh, it might take more than just you to do this, but let's just, let's just, let's just see what happens here. Okay?
Sounds good.
First one that's going to come up on us here is this downtown area study for 75,000. Is that something that needs to go forward right now? Or what is that?
So that project is a part of planning. So I will refer to Cody Byrd on that one.
Um, thanks Tyler. Good evening. This is Cody Byrd, planning director. Um, the, the downtown area plan would be uh, a, a next step for the town uh, following up on our comprehensive plan. Uh, the downtown has been identified as a strategic uh, area for the town's future, both by staff, our board, and from public comments we've received in the comprehensive plan feedback. Um, and so we'd identify this as a, as a need for identifying a specific uh, uh, vision theme and infrastructure needed to facilitate the future um, so the proposal was to hire consultants uh, in 2012, facilitate public engagement and design. Um, and so the, the question that was asked was, is that important to pursue this year? Uh, we, staff believes it for discussion.
You, you said it's open for discussion. You believe it's, it's put, it's, it's necessary to push forward. Is that what you said?
Staff believes it's a necessary step and we're seeing that supported by the public feedback from our comprehensive plan.
Got that. And, and we've been, we've been, just so the board knows, we, this has been on our radar for quite some time to come up with the vis- to come up with something for downtown that the citizens can be a part of, of, of addressing and designing as we go forward. Uh, so that's the purpose of the $75,000 budget. Is that person, is that, is that consultant uh, uh, been uh, vetted out or looked at or anything like that?
Uh, no, man, not yet. Um, what we would do is we'd put it out for an RFP uh, and review applications.
Okay. Um, all right, let's move on to the next one.
Oh, pardon me, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Mr. Byrd, on this project, I mean, the priority list is three, but the one of the things I see in the description is stormwater drainage. And we all recognize that that is a significant issue in the downtown.
Absolutely.
Other parts of the budget, their lists, I think we're working on a stormwater drainage master plan, I believe. So is, would that cover this area? Is that separate from this area is, because I guess that's the question is. Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, trustee Whitehouse. Uh, I would suggest that the, that the stormwater uh, concerns that we've heard about in the downtown uh, is going to see some overlap between the downtown area plan and the stormwater master plan. Um, we know it's a critical area. The solution is probably not limited to the downtown. It probably extends beyond that in terms of the downstream conveyance. Um, so we'd be looking at both the area plan and the stormwater master plan uh, to provide guidance for the specific improvements needed to address the downtown drainage.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Another one I have on here to talk about uh, was property acquisition. I think this is all about the Harrison house. And uh, I'm not quite sure. This is the question posed by trustee Gator. You want to elaborate on that trustee Gator, what you, what you're after here?
Yes. From what I understand is that it was combined, the construction cost of upgrading and updating the um, Harrison house to act as like kind of an interim town hall was combined with potential funds to purchase other property. And so wanted to see what the breakdown of that was, like how much of that is slated for the Harrison house improvements, how much of that would be slated towards purchase of new property? And my concerns are, I, I think we need to go with the Harrison house side, but I would prefer that we wait on purchasing or setting funds aside for purchasing property for this year. But I don't know what the breakdown of that, because I think they got combined into one um, item there on the budget.
This is Jude. So on your revised budget, we did take out the um, 300,000 that we had in there. And the conversations that Kelly and I had were if we find that perfect spot, or if we need to do a purchase, uh, we can't close anybody that's purchased real estate. We understand that that's, you know, it takes you at least a month to get to a closing. So we would come back to the board. So the funds that you see in there right now, uh, Kelly's revised number was uh, 989. And we did a 10%. So we um, on that, because we don't know what we don't know. So the only funding that you see in there, that is all Harrison house.
Good enough. Okay. Let's talk about the recreation feasibility study for 50,000. Can you, can you explain a little bit about that?
I would defer to Lori.
Yes, I'm coming on board. Um, I am uh, happy to support this and hope that the board will as well. Part of being able to redirect, grow and build our department of recreation is about looking ahead towards future needs for recreation. And that includes building land facilities. Um, all the time and energy we spend having to use other people's facilities because we don't have our own, the limitations that that provides. And so this, this money is being set aside, hopefully this year, upcoming year, for us to do the study to begin to find how we can grow um, all recreation for the residents of the town. Um, and that, that would take in land, it would take in possible facilities. It would talk in about infrastructure that we might need to put together. Just all the different perspectives that we can get and, and having experts come into our town and look at what we have and how we can masterfully use that for benefit to the town as well as being um, good stewards with our dollars. That's, that's why we're setting aside or asking to set aside this money. Um, like I said before, and this was the last time we met, I believe that the recreation department is the heart and soul of our town. And the library is also part of that. And this is what's going to drive people to want to stay home. These are the things that we have to offer. We need to build them and grow them and make them so incredibly successful that they're also buying homes and whining and dining here and all the great things that can happen from having a, a vital, vital town. So that's why we put the money in and we're hoping to be able to study this so that we can move forward. And that's also part of the reason for the director of parks and recreation position. It's, we're beginning to build a package here so that we can truly develop this area.
You, you think this will be done in the 2021?
I'm hoping it will be done in 2021. I realize COVID is putting a lot of limitations on our abilities to really just go out and move about the cabin as the old airline commercial says. Um, and we're going to be starting the year with a manager of parks and recreation as we've just indicated. And that that person will be spending some of their initial months working on onboarding the parks team and getting, getting the two departments merged. Um, I think it's well within the purview of some of that activity to also conduct a study. Because then that begins to inform future year strategies and long-range planning. Without that, we would be pretty much status quo, building within our own expertise and means for this next year. But then delaying the study out another year means that we still have not developed that long-term strategy. Um, I feel they go hand in hand, mayor.
Understood. I just, go ahead trustee Whitehouse.
Uh, yes, I was, pardon me, I was looking at last year's CIP and it looks the 2020, it looks like this is a rollover of funds from the previous year as opposed to an allocation of new funds. Is that correct?
That's why I asked if we were going to use it this year.
Yeah, okay.
It is my goal, yes.
Okay. Any, anything else on this particular item?
Uh, I guess, I didn't know how you wanted to go through this mayor, if you wanted us.
I'm trying to, yeah.
I just saved my notes for later, so I'll bring them up now if that's how you'd like.
Yeah, I think so. I think you should
Okay.
Just tag along with me. Go ahead.
Sure. So let me do this one. And then I want to backtrack to the downtown area study, but with the recreation study, and I understand again, the need to look forward. And a lot of this is going to combine together with my concerns again with going back to um, looking at future, if we're, we're saying, hey, we want to have a town hall by 2024, which I keep hearing from people, this is something, it's important, it's something we need to have. But then looking at seeing, you know, there's a $7 million bond that we're potentially going to have to take out. What I would prefer to see us do is fund that from fund balance. Let, let's control what we're spending. Let, let's make sure that we're not going out and doing everything. And let's actually fund that from fund balance. We don't need to go and take out another bond that's going to require us to then go and raise fees on our citizens again. If we can just be wise in how we budget, we can actually, over the next four years. I mean, I've identified in projects, almost $2 million worth of things that there's still questions, but potentially could be offset. And that's all money that could stay in those fund balances. So as much as it would be nice, um, we're, I don't believe we're in a position to support additional people coming here right now. Until we get that infrastructure put in place. And so I think again, that's something where we could keep that in fund balances could go towards other things such as the um, town hall potentially down the road. And the other piece too, that I would prefer to see is rather than us right out of the chute, spending a bunch of money to do a study um, and paying professionals to come in from outside of our town. We have this amazing resources in the CAC, in the Parks Advisory Board, in our other town boards where we have people that live here in the community. Let's have them start some of this process and figuring out what do people want? What do people want to see? What do we kind of envision here? And then when we get to a point where we have the necessary funds, we have the infrastructure to support that. And we, if we still feel that we need to go out and bring in professionals, let's do it at that point. But you know, I hear from a lot of our citizens that are on these boards, they're like, we don't have a whole lot to do. These would be great projects to have them work on. And so that would be my preference is let's utilize these resources we have locally before we're going out to spend.
I have to respectfully disagree with some of that. And this is kind of my reasoning behind it. If we're going to approach these projects strategically with a vision for the town of Wellington, that's going to follow, you know, both the values and things that we've determined are in our strategic plan. We have to have a coordinated effort to seek out ways to meet those goals. And that is where professional studies will occur. As a result of those professional studies, and they determine the areas of focus or the projects or give us goals or options, that's where these very awesome volunteers that we have can be activated. And then they have a purpose, a function, and a primary goal that's in line with our strategic goal. So I think that we have such valuable volunteers, but when it comes to a professional study for recreation for an entire town in comparison to best practices across the country, that's, that's where we're going to find the focus that we need to capture. And we can't do that without that professional assistance.
I, I would think the professional assistants would, would actually seek out those agencies as well. That we have, John, you know, they would work with those people and get their input to help morph this thing, to help organize it. I think that would be the, the reason what you, just to help, to help guide us through it effectively with their input and ideas. I think that's what trustee Kenny's alluding to.
No, and and I'm, I'm not here, I'm not going to try and argue convinced. I just want to hear, I have, I have, and what's driving all of these concerns? And I didn't share this earlier because I apologize. I have heard from several business owners, they're concerned about losing businesses. Depending on what happens with these lockdowns, there's some, some severe concerns. My concern is that we're going to start seeing citizens potentially lose houses or not be able to make payments and tax payments, which could potentially hurt us significantly. And so from my standpoint is it's looking at things right now where, yes, it's be great, it'd be great for future planning. But I'm trying to say, I would prefer us to keep as healthy a fund balance as possible and say, okay, yes, this would be great. Yes, this would be good for future. But for me, is it, is it infrastructure related? Because we know we're up against state guidelines on those, then that has to be done. But to me, the downtown area study, the recreation study, as great as these would be right now, I understand it's $50,000, it's $70,000 here, but on my list I put together those 50,000, 70,000, that came out to 1.7 million dollars.
We're going to get to the big ticket items.
I know. So that's where I'm coming from. That's it.
Yeah. No, no, I, I appreciate it. Absolutely. But this, so let's just move on now that we've got those two studies earmarked here that, hey, we don't know if we really need to throw that at it yet or not. But let's move on to these concrete things here that, that are hard cost for a specific purpose that have been brought up that, you know, I think that uh, we ought to ask and well, the next one's going to come up. And I think Bob's going to have to talk to a lot of some of this and uh, uh, we're looking at for a new street sweeper, Bob. Is that what we're doing? 240.
Yes, we are. Um, that's in the street fund. And our current street sweeper is um, about 20 years old. Yeah. They don't, the manufacturer doesn't carry parts. After 20 years, we've had to kind of every year ramp up our, our maintenance costs to keep this thing held together to keep it running. Um, so yeah, we feel like this piece of equipment is up for replacement. Uh, 20 years seems like a sufficient lifespan for for a um, a piece of equipment like this.
20 years, a long time.
So we know we have, you know, we spent approximately 5,000 on it this year. We think we, we're going to be closer to 20,000 next year. There's some bearings going bad. Um, the tank has gone bad. Um, we frankly, our, our fleet people and a lot of folks in public works are masters as stretching a dollar. And that's why we have a machine that's 20 years old and we're still able to use it. But uh, it is looking like it's at that point where it needs to be replaced.
Um, Mr. Gally, I had a question. Looking through uh, last year's C I Um, Mr. Gally, I had a question. Looking through uh, last year's CIP. It shows the cost spread out, uh, it looks like four sixty thousand dollar increments for payments and this this time it's looking like a. A single year finance and purchase. Uh, I'm sure you looked at the interest on that. Does that, is that worth exploring or could you explain the rationale for the change between the? Two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty.
At um, trustee. Whitehouse, we were looking at a lease purchase for this and. In kind of exploring that a little bit more, we found some hidden costs that we didn't necessarily like and um. Um, we felt like it was the more prudent approach to go ahead and buy it outright as opposed to going through that lease purchase arrangement.
Thank you.
So so it costs less money to buy it outright than go lease?
It in general, yes, that's true.
Mr. Gowing, what is the expected life? Span on a piece of equipment such as this generally as you've seen in your experience?
Fifteen to twenty years, depending on the the usage and the care that's given to it. Uh, we believe that we can get more years than is typical of a piece of equipment like this. Um, so we would expect to see a replacement for this in about twenty years.
Okay. Next item comes up here. The zero turn motor for forty, mower for forty thousand. You want to tell us a little bit about that?
Well, in general, um. I'm not sure where we're at in terms of which fund we're looking at right now. But in general, as we add in more open space and more parks and more other things that need to be mode. Um, we do need more resources to do that. So with the explosive growth that we've had over the last ten years. In some ways, we're still playing catch up. But in general, um. We have uh, mowers that need to be cycled in and out. We do use our mowers hard. And even though they get great maintenance, they still get used up pretty fast. So yeah, these are new mowers. This is not an especially high priority purchase for us. Um, but it does affect our ability to. To get out there and provide the level of service in terms of um, landscape maintenance for parks and streetscapes and open spaces. That um, uh, that would be in line with what we would like to provide to the town.
Uh, Mr. Galling, is this for one mower or two riding mowers?
That's, I believe that's two mowers and again, I'm not sure exactly which line item you're looking at. Bob, we're in the street fund. Yeah, that's for that's for two mowers.
That's two mowers.
So obviously, these are at that price point, they're, these are commercial mowers. They're not coming out of Sears. I mean. What is a piece of professional equipment that is, you know, professional grade equipment, again, just like the street sweeper, I mean. How long do these things, what's a reasonable life expectancy on this piece of hardware?
I think the life expect expectancy on these mowers is um, roughly ten years. Uh, they're the zero turn mowers or as you might imagine, they make some very tight turns and you can mow around the trees and. And especially as we bring on more open space that has that have trees planted in there. We've got to be able to 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 get around a lot more things than we used to back in the day. Um, so yeah, these are, these are not cheap machines and they're um. Uh, but they do a great job and with the proper maintenance, they'll last a long time.
Okay, two mowers. That's what you got there.
Two mowers.
Now, now here's here's where I want to go. I'm going to jump ahead. Uh. This next one, there's another one that you're you got another one in here for eighteen thousand, so we're looking at three mowers.
Yeah, there's two for streets and one for water.
Two for streets and one for water. How how does that all work? I mean, they're all mowers. You can't use them. I mean, can't use it over there somewhere else or what what are they dedicated to somewhere where you would use it? What is that?
To be honest, I thought we pushed this one back in the um, in the water department. So that that one, at least it was my intention to push that back into a a year down the down the road a little bit.
So so is it safe to say that that one can come off, right?
Yes, that that one, I think that in the final version of the budget, you would see that pushed out. Uh.
All right. Good.
So I guess, uh, may I ask a question, Mayor Hammond?
Yes.
Okay, um, so Mr. Gowing. If we were not to buy those two mowers for the streets department, would our staff still be able to do their jobs?
Um, well. The short answer is yes, but not to quite the level of service that we would. We would hope to provide. Um, as mowers get older, they go down, those parts typically have a fairly long lead time. Um. All kinds of things go out on these mowers and um, so a little bit of this is about redundancy as well. Um, but primarily I would say that yes, we probably could still get the job done. Um, we might have to live with a little bit longer grass occasionally and it may not. Be kind of the the manicured look that I think most folks in town have come to expect in their parks and open spaces.
For my personal, thank you for answering that. I I would prefer that we hold off on those for now. Again. Looking at, I would prefer that we focus those funds on those essential things that have to happen. That we cannot make do without and we hold on some of these things. Again, i- if things don't turn out bad and this next year is great, then fantastic, but I would prefer to. Be prepared and kind of tighten the belt and then we'll see what happens as we get into this next year.
Okay, thank you for that feedback. Uh, these are all, uh, these are priority three projects, so they're not critical and we haven't defined them as such, so. We can certainly um, look at that and see if we can defer all three of them. Um, we may come back to you with a request to get at least one, so.
Well, you might need one, you know, you're asking for three. Uh, uh, you know, we we gotta, we gotta have good parts. We've got a lot of them now. Yes, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to getting one for sure.
I think we can look at this item in in the final version, you'll see.
Yeah, yeah, let's evaluate that a little bit. Uh, so it looks like John Gator's getting a a vehicle here. For forty five thousand, so John, dear Gator.
Yeah, we should probably just cut.
I I would agree, we should cut that. We don't want to be uh, partial to any of the trustees.
That's a good point. Um, here, we have slowly kind of bringing gators into our. Indoor equipment inventory because they're just so handy. Um, as we have needed to ramp up maintenance and have ramped up maintenance for some of the deferred maintenance and others. These gators allow us to to carry tools around, parts around, uh, especially within the um. The plant sites, but also in other sites, so. Um, these gators are extremely handy. They're safer than wrestling. Um. You know, two hundred pound pumps into the back truck and. Uh, you can't always get where you need to go with that truck, so they're pretty handy. We can get uh. Deliver these heavy parts directly to where they're needed inside the plants.
That it it costs more than a truck.
Uh, well, they're not cheap and a couple of these have attachments. And again, um.
Trying to define that. One in the streets department is forty five thousand and then we have another one in the parks department that's twenty thousand.
Right, this this one for the streets has some attachments on it. For um, for grading purposes and and things of that sort, though, um. And there's also a bit of uh, transfers, those those prices, um. Yeah, reflects some additional equipment that comes with certain models of those gears.
Then you said you guys have been work, oh, sorry, go ahead trustee Whitehouse.
I I I just wanted to see, so are we? If we're talking about, uh, are we talking about removing both of these? Both for uh, water and streets and parks, is that what we're? Was, I'm not sure if we said we were going to scratch this or not, I'm.
I have said that yet, just you're just talking about it. So, yeah, that's all, I mean. Uh, I we're gonna, we got this other one for the parks. I mean, if you got the more expensive one, could you use it interchangeably, Bob?
That's certainly possible. Um, that takes a little bit more time for us to take a trailer over elsewhere and pick up the gator and. Or any of this equipment, so it's.
But you can't ride that gator over there?
Uh, no, we wouldn't want to drive that gator all the way to the water plant from the wastewater.
To the water plant, I got it, to the, to the wa, I got it. All right, I get that, okay.
So if these gears travel around.
I know, that's right. Uh, well, I mean.
Mr. Gowing, you'd mentioned that we've been working these into the fleet. How many do we currently have?
Well, I wish I could answer that question. That's a great question. I believe that we have just the one right now.
Just one.
Yeah, and that one sits out at the wastewater plant. I believe we bought that one last year. And um, they use it all the time for all manner of things out there. Um, in general, our our plant folks have to move around a lot of stuff, a lot of heavy stuff every day. And um, these gators not only are handy for that purpose, but they keep. Our guys out of kind of awkward physical situations where they may end themselves, so.
Right, right, right.
We've made some some pretty good strides in reducing the amount of workers comp claims that we that we get and it's specifically because of. Things like this kind of things.
Yeah, low profile lift, right? Low profile lift, it's kind of jumped bed on it too.
Yeah.
With our, I mean, my my opinion is that try to, you know, water and wastewater are critical utilities that we. Have to need trying to swap out infrastructure, you know, like a one of these items. I mean, if we're talking. Not to suggest they don't cost something, but. I mean, this is what we need to do business. I mean, that's certainly my perspective is that. If this is something that's needed for these these two things, I I would support that.
Yeah, we all currently, we only have one. That that's that's not much. I thought we had more than that.
Well, I think there's got to be one. Isn't there one in parks? Because.
There's got to be one in parks.
Yeah, both of you are right. We do actually have two. There's one in parks. And um, that's outfitted with some kind of specialized equipment for. Uh, laying down the lines and so the laser blade for grading the the infields and whatnot. We get that too, you're right.
Mayor Hammond, I would agree with trustee Whitehouse. I think it's really important that we give staff the tools that they need in order to do their job. And the appearance of our community. It doesn't just um, make our community attractive, it also impacts the value of the homes in our community. And the types of businesses and and people that we're also attracting, so. I think that there is um. Some value in investing in the equipment that we have to maintain our community and so. I uh, see the value that Bob has brought to the table through the capital improvement plan and I support. Um, his asks that he's brought to uh, meet those needs for the community.
Now, I kind of, I kind of tend to agree with him. I mean, I've got to defer to Bob. He's got a crew of people. They got to keep busy and efficient. And uh, the equipment is met for something specific, not the the pickup truck. While going down the roads, I I kind of, if you got to have them, you got to have them, I don't, you know. Because it would, any other feedback?
Be um, out of line to ask for maybe in a future meeting for an inventory list of our our fleet?
Absolutely not. We've 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 got that trustee McDonald. We could certainly provide that to you via email if you'd like.
That would be great if it isn't too much trouble, but I certainly don't want to take up too much of of staff time regarding such requests. So thank you, Mr. Gowing.
Not a problem.
Um, all right, let's 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 go on to the next one. It's kind of a big item and you can explain this, but a water efficiency program equipment for one sixty. Bob, what what we got there? What is that?
So this is a program budget. It consists of several of the uh, higher priority. Water conservation elements that came out of the water efficiency study that the board approved. A while back, if you recall, that was uh, funded almost uh, entirely through a DOL grant, I believe. And they looked at, oh, thirty or forty different alternative plans to to create some water conservation, water efficiencies in town. And we've picked three of those to move forward with. These were the. The kind of the hard hitters in terms of the the best benefit cost and also just the sheer magnitude of benefit from these. And the first one is an advanced meter system. An advanced meter system allows you to. Uh, it's it's directly connected to our to our casel billing system. So it consists of a advanced meter that gives you continuous information and is radioed to an antenna. A receiver and right now we're looking at putting that out at the water plant because that's that's nice and high. And is connected really directly to uh, finances billing system. So an advanced meter system can give you real time information on usage and that obviously rolls right into. Um. Making it more usable, more data, usable data available to our customers. If they can see immediately what what's happening or almost immediately what's happening with their water usage. Well, they can start to use this information to make the decisions that. That would be appropriate for them relative to their water use. It also provides for leak detection. It provides like a whole range of reports. But the two that I that I like the most are just that real time usage information and leak detection. So there's several. All kind of thresholds that you can set. If uh, if the flow rate increases by a certain amount or a certain duration and and again, those are thresholds to be set. Uh, we get instant reports and I think several of the trustees have experienced. And I know we've experienced leaks that uh, don't show up until maybe the second billing cycle after it's after it started. Well, that's a lot of water loss, but that's also a big expense to our customers, so there's a real benefit to the customers and to. Um, utility staff in terms of being able to get on top of this stuff immediately. So in general, we have um, about two thousand of the old meters that would need to be replaced. We have that um, that receiver, the antenna system that would be hooked up um, via data to. Uh, the casel system. And tha- that's about it. So there's a little bit of programming, so we we changed our standards to go to what's called the census. I have parole, it's a advanced meter capable uh, meter. Uh, several years ago, so all the new developments are putting these in and a few of the more recent developments have already put them in. But uh, this would basically be a four year plan to replace those um, meters that aren't AMI capable. And build that, the various infrastructure that's needed to put that in. Um, another program that we're looking at. Is just more public outreach, so we've been working with Mahala and DJ and several others on how to get. Better, more effective messaging out to our customers about what they can do. And we know that people get frustrated with the irrigation restrictions in particular. Um, because not everybody really understands how to use their their irrigation system. I have one and I hate dealing with that thing. Um, so just more outreach and more uh, hopefully useful information for our customers to put into. Effect to help them keep their bills down and to keep the overall water use and and water that we have to produce. Down as well. And as you all know, this has a direct impact to our budgets in terms of the raw water costs that we pay. They get paid on this kind of uh, escalating schedule based on usage. And then of course, the operating cost and the whole shebang, right? Additional. Uh, infrastructure has to be built to accommodate that that additional growth. So the fundamental goal. Of the water conservation program is to reduce water usage. Um, through the smart application of technology. And public outreach and we're also looking at revising our landscape standards for new development. Incorporating some some Zurich principles into there, some smart irrigation principles as well. So that's really the three pronged attack that we have um, going on right now.
So this thing here, the one sixty is going to do two things. It's going to help us conserve water. And help keep the cost down.
That is the goal, yes.
Those are pretty important goals.
We believe so.
So, Mr. Galler, this is uh, Tim Whitehouse here. So, uh. We last couple of years had a a newer meter put in. They took out the old bronze one. I mean, would that be? Is that compliant with the new system? I know there's been a. Ongoing program to try to replace those. Would those work with this system or would you need to? need to install a different type of water meter in this situation?
If it was replaced in about the last five or six years, it would be compatible with the AMI system. It, it, those require a few minutes of programming to get it to um, to report on the, the kind of more continuous basis than what we do now, which is just read them once a month. And obviously having data every day or even every hour would be much more useful for everybody who's concerned about their water bills and their water usage than it would be every month.
But this, this is part of my, my recollection, this is part of like a three or five year plan to try to get to, you know, I've seen a new construction addresses this with the modern technology, but maybe it's the homes and the older homes such as ours that uh, but, but if you're saying that, so that seems like it's already ongoing and I'm not sure when the completion of that is, but certainly seems pretty smart.
Yeah, and like I say, all the new subdivisions are putting in meters that are AMI capable. Uh, it's really the, the older subdivisions, the meters that were installed. Um, uh, back before, you know, we, these AMI meters were part of our, our standards. And that's been several years ago. Um, most of the newer subdivisions that have been built. In general, we have roughly thirty six hundred residential meters. I believe that's the number. About sixteen hundred of those are AMI compatible right now. So it's the, the two thousand that were installed before that, that we'd be looking to replace over roughly a four year period.
And then, because obviously, I mean, I saw someone today actually out reading some of the meters on uh, on grants. So at a certain point, there's probably, I mean, if this system's fully automated, you just, it's uploading this information. At that point, you would probably have a, a cost savings for an individual who's not out uh, manually taking these, you know, measurements and downloading.
That would be another benefit of this system. Meter reading as we currently do it would, would go away once we have this fully implemented.
Well, it's an investment in the right direction. I think, you know, with, with the major concerns we have with the cost of water and the efficient use of it, and it's also infrastructure related. Sounds like a pretty smart thing to do. Other thoughts on it? Okay, let's just have a look at this next one. Looks like you're looking for two pickups here. Is that right?
That's right. And that's really just part of our ongoing fleet update. We, we've still got like a ninety nine Durango, which no one will drive because it breaks down a mile from the water plant. Uh, that one needs to get replaced. And as you know, we've um, you know, we've added some people and when you um, a field maintenance person, they generally need a truck to, to haul all their stuff around.
Okay, uh, let's talk about this big, is this other one? This is a a vehicle, uh, this is a big one, a vacuum truck sewer. Why don't you tell us what that's all about?
So that is another more than twenty year old piece of equipment. The vector, it does a lot of things for us. Um, we need it for uh, several compliance required programs. In other words, programs that we are not allowed to run a utility unless we, we take care of those. We have to respond to any kind of sewer overflow in the twenty four hours. If we got sewer plugs, we've got to get out there and get those fixed and within a few minutes. Um, potholing and our jetting program, our collection system has to be jetted and cleaned out. Um, we really need to see them all once a year, but every two years. And the vector is used for all those functions. And um, the vector that we own right now is a nineteen ninety six international that was built by Ferris Machinery. Um, it's gotten unreliable to the point that we couldn't actually use it this year and we had to go out and rent a vector for some of the things that we have to do. And because a lot of the, the functions of this factor are based on emergency conditions, it has to be ready to go at all times. And so this is, it's unfortunate that this one is coinciding with another extremely large dollar piece of equipment, the street sweeper. But it is um, a piece of equipment that we need in order to be able to stay in compliance. And frankly, what we have right now is just not reliable. It's got all kinds of problems. Um, and it's, it's just time to replace it. And I know it's a big ticket item. It's, it really is primarily a wastewater piece of equipment. Uh, most of those functions listed out were wastewater activities. And the wastewater fund is at least in better shape than the water fund, but um, we obviously wouldn't be proposing it unless we felt like we.
Oh, it sounds like it's a, it's a thing that we gotta have it to keep staying compliant to clean up our wastewater. Any thoughts? Okay, let's move along.
I think it's such a good value, we should get two.
Yeah.
No, I do think it's a necessary piece of, especially with the explanation.
Okay, I'm writing that down.
Okay. All right, looks like you're looking for a new skid steer. Who, who, who wants to run around in one of those?
Well, the skid steer, um, when we get deliveries, you know, we bring a lot of chemicals into both plants and a lot of materials that we use in the, in the uh, treatment processes. So we use the skid steer for all kinds of things. This is that same program. I think we bought a new skid steer about two years ago. Um, and basically it's, it's such a great program that it you know, it's, the, the skid steer and really just to back up. So we use the skid steer for a lot of different purposes, but primarily to take delivery of chemicals that come in on pallets or um, uh, large, heavy pallets of materials. Um, so we've got to get that from the truck to the building and to the location where it gets hooked up to the appropriate machinery and used in our process.
Is this, this is in addition to the ones we have, right?
We really only have one of the newer ones. It's out at the wastewater plant and um.
That's, it's dedicated there then.
It, it really is. They use this every day. Yeah, it's, it's not the kind of thing that you can spread out between plants, cause uh, they use it multiple times every day.
Well, it's actually not a bad price for one of those.
It's a fantastic price.
Yeah, it really is. I mean, you could buy two of them for the price of that gator.
So if we already have one, where would the second skid steer, steer be going in? If, what are we currently utilizing to do the work that we'd be utilizing it for now?
It would go to the water plant and um, um, we have an older skid steer that doesn't quite have the ability to do everything we need. This one would be heavier. And um, because of the weight of some of the things we carry around, we need something with just, just more backend weight on it, eh? And the one we have is old and frankly beat up like a lot of our equipment. So this would be a new one. We know that we're going to be uh, going through some tough times out at the water plant, especially for the next three years. But uh, certainly when we start up the new plant, after that timeframe, uh, we're gonna have even more chemicals coming in and out of that plant. So we'll be set up for that. So a lot of the things that we're thinking about, especially on the two plants is kind of looking forward to make sure we're prepared so that we don't have to come in three years with all these purchases. But kind of trying to spread them out just a little bit and take care of the, the low hanging fruit, if you will, um, early.
So I guess a little bit of the concern that I have as we're going through here and I can appreciate that we need things. Um, but the concern that I have is there's a lot of projects and things on this list that are coming in for twenty twenty two. So it's, again, this comes back to my concern that we're basically going to be using it all up. And again, I for me, it's a question of are we really being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars? Because as much as I, I want to enable our staff to be able to do the jobs, I think there also needs to come a point where we need to ask, is there a way that we can make, do without this? Because our responsibility is to make sure that we are being wise with the steward, stewards of our taxpayers' dollars. That, that's our job. It's not, is it the best ways, is it the easiest ways, is it the fastest way? It's are we being wise stewards with the money that we're spending? So I do have some concerns with the going forward with all of these.
So uh, Mr. Gowing, I mean, if I look at the twenty four thousand dollar line item, it says public works sewer for bio solids handling. Is this is there a, am I missing something here? Or I thought, I thought you mentioned this is be, gonna be at the water plant. Am I misunderstanding?
Um, I'm sorry. Where, where are you looking trustee gate, trustee Whitehouse? You, you're looking at the water fund? We, we had one in the past that we bought for the wastewater fund that might be what you're seeing.
Bio solids handling. And uh,
Oh, that. Yeah, let me get there. That's not an entire new um, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to look for that, the project description, and there's so many of them in here. I'm having a hard time finding. That's actually equipment for uh, the um, skid steer that we have out there. We've got two um, so the solids that come out of the wastewater plant. Um, those need to be turned over basically. So this is a piece of equipment to basically.
It's an attachment. It's an attachment.
Yes.
It's an auger.
It's basically an auger. Yeah, it's a trade name.
I wonder why it's so cheap. Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's not the whole skid steer. It's just that attachment so that we can get out there and work those solids to dry them out because we pay to have those trucked off and that gets, we pay for that based on weight. So.
How often does this happen? Weekly?
Uh, more like, well, the working of it happens more than weekly. They're hauled off uh, roughly once a month. So if we can get that dried out.
So that's what it is. That's what a trustee gator, it's an attachment to spread out the solids and let them dry out. Then they can go scoop them up and get rid of them. Is that right?
Right, yeah. If you go to the actual sheet, you can see the, the management on the typical skid steer. Um, it's, it's basically an auger to fluff it up for lack of a better word, to dry it out.
Yeah, spread it out, spreads it out, rotates it, turns it.
Variates it.
That's a piece of equipment that's ongoing maintenance.
Mayor Hammond?
Yeah.
I apologize. It is getting close to almost nine o'clock. Can we move forward with the capital improvement plan, please?
Uh, two more things and we can. Is that okay? Got two more items, two more items. Uh, what about this uh, pedestrian access over the Windsor ditch? What's going on there?
That's a project that's been on our books since I got here. Uh, there was a, a agreement that the town entered into with the Windsor ditch to enclose that portion of the ditch that's just north of Wellington Point, right along Washington there. And um, um, so we're on the hook for eighty thousand dollars for that agreement. So I just, it's just getting rolled over. And um, that's what that's for, is to meet our obligations.
Why does it need to be enclosed?
Uh, I, I don't even know that I know the answer to that trustee gator. That happened long before I got here. I can tell you that this has been in the budget uh, rolling over every year so that if and when that project goes forward, we can pay our share, which we entered into contract to provide.
Let me see if I can comment on that. This is Brad March. We did an agreement sometime back and Wyatt, you were on the, or you were coming on the board at that time.
That was, yeah.
There was a crossing of the ditch and there's a, there's a second component of that, which I have not heard anything further from the Windsor ditch. I ask about it periodically. There was a crossing that they, they created the first crossing. It was intended that that crossing was going to be further to the east. Um, and it was actually where it ultimately ended up. And we've still got that easterly work that they may do. If they do that, there's a second crossing and work we're required to contribute to. I, I don't think it's going to come up, but I think we've just in prudence kept it on the budget and rolled it over from year to year.
I, I think it would be a, potentially a good project for us, cause that is a big, deep ditch when it's full of water. And um, frankly, it feels like a bit of a safety hazard to me.
It's a serious safety hazard. The, the problem is, is that they need to pull in some funding to do it. And I don't think we can do it for that eighty thousand. That's our contribution for it.
Yeah, the balance of that project is actually involves the Fox Elder Creek crossing as well. So there's, there's a lot of money involved in it. We've done the design work on that whole um, crossing. And they just haven't had the funding for it, which is why we haven't completed that last piece of it.
It, it, it makes the drop structure that sits there to the east substantially more safe. And it's, it's a concern for them, particularly based upon the proximity to the school and some other things.
So it's a rollover until they get funding?
That's my assumption.
Okay, all right. Now Bob, what's your plan? To go back and, and firm up the CIP later on and come back?
Yeah, I've, I've gotten some pretty solid feedback in this meeting, especially relative.
To go back and take a look at those items. That's a long, that's a good stab at a lot of things and you know, if you see something in there, do your, you know, your best work on it and do, evaluate what you got and come bring back, bring it back to us. The Fairness Board? Okay. Well, why don't we just move on to our action items? We've got a long way to go. Um, I do appreciate the input trustee gator did researching a lot of this stuff. John, thank you very much. Well, let our team go do their homework.
I would also like to comment mayor, then our last meeting, we did say that, I don't know that any public has comment. We did say we would give public an opportunity to share any comments they had on the budget in general at the last meeting. Um, I don't know when you were planning to do that or if anyone from public cares to comment, but just remind you of that.
Sure, that's right. Now, but when he brings it back, it's going to be an action item.
And that, what I have issue with that mayor Hammond is at that point, the work is pretty much done. The, the board's approving or not approving the budget. That there's, there's not more adjustment to be done. Um, which really doesn't give us a chance to take public comment into consideration because at that point, it's, I mean, as um, Ms. Tippett shared, we have to have it done by the fifteenth. So if we have serious public comment that needs to have substantial changes, we now have to call a special meeting to approve the budget because we can't do it on the eighth.
Well, the good news is, is that if we do approve a budget and we do find that there has to be a substantial change made in the future, we can always do an appropriation or an adjustment. So then, I agree trustee gator, that we do want to try and give um, ample notice for the public to try and provide input. But this is a, a normal process that we go about just about every year. And sometimes when the public isn't there to comment, I think that that's a good indication that maybe we're doing a pretty darn good job. So I think that we're doing a really good job with our due diligence, with our postings and our required um, notifications. And all of the additional outreach that you've done as well has been super helpful. So I don't have a whole lot of concerns about the budget coming back for approval in December. Um, but I'm also not opposed. If you feel there's a strong need for an additional discussion or work session, I would be willing to participate in that as well.
I, I simply wanted to remind the board of what we said at our last meeting. You can choose to disregard that and not allow public comment. That's absolutely fine.
Well, we are gonna, there is gonna be public comment when it comes back, John. Man, to be an action item. I mean, they are gonna get the way in. Um, okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is Jude again. Um, if I may, um, as we're moving forward and when we are saying to Bob that we're going to bring this back again, we look at the calendar. Um, we don't have another meeting scheduled before, between now and December eighth. So would it be accurate in saying as we were looking at these questions, the one point seven million, we know that we can take out the three hundred and eighteen thousand. That was the property acquisition that we've since revised. The eighteen thousand on the mower, um, the zero turn that was in the water department. Bob was going to push that out. And then as a compromise, what if we did um, the downtown area study, the recreation feasibility study, the economic uh, development strategic plan update and the parks master plan? Those total two hundred and forty five thousand dollars. What if as a compromise, we put those, bring those back? Um, meet in the middle. Let's say what's the first quarter look like? And say, you know, we don't know what post COVID is. Hopefully we have more information. We look at sales tax. How are we doing there? Um, and we bring those back to the board and we move forward with the other ones. I don't know. It may be too much of an ask this evening. Um, and we bring those back to the board and we move forward with the other ones, I don't know, it may be too much of an ask this evening. Because otherwise, I think we need to, um, tentatively say when we are going to meet. Or we need to republish our date for a budget adoption, because it has to be done at a regular meeting. And as I look at the calendar, we simply do not have enough time to bring this back again.
I will just speak for myself, I would, I like that, I, again, I do have concerns, but. If we can at least pull those portions and re-review those, once we have an idea what this next year would look like, I would be comfortable with that.
That's a pretty good stab at it, John, you know, it's a pretty good attempt to, to, to be, you know. Responsible with what we're doing here. I think that's, I mean, I think that's pretty good, I don't, what do you, what's the rest of the board think, you wanna, you wanna do what we just said there?
This trustee Whitehouse, I would agree with, uh, Ms. Tippett's.
Okay, let's, let's go along that line, let's do that. I think that's pretty good. Alright then. Yeah, thanks a lot for everybody hanging in there. Let's get to some action items. Bob, thanks for all the input, that was good.
Well, thank you for, for all that good feedback and, uh, we're certainly listening and, and we'll try to make some adjustments in the final version.
Okay. Uh, alright, first action item D is a chamber commerce funding request. See here.
So this is, um, me again, um, I'm not sure who else wants to take lead on it, we need direction of.
Excuse me, point of order, point of order. I missed the consent agenda. And trustees, do you have any comments on our consent agenda dated November tenth, twenty twenty that come to their mind? If that's the case, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of November tenth, twenty twenty?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator. Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes, okay, first item, D one, chamber commerce funding request, Judy?
Sorry, I muted myself, I'm sorry, um, so moving forward, we, I just wanted direction so we can close this out in. Twenty twenty one, I had sent a memo, um, addressing the possible usage of, um, some, on the rent. And then, and in addition, uh, trustee McDonald had weighed in and then, um, in addition, trustee Whitehouse, so. Um, if I could just get some feedback so we could close this out, um, before we move on with the next budget.
Did we get to a number?
That's, that's what I'm looking for, my recommendation in the memo was, um, that we could certainly support. Um, using some of the, the logic of COVID was, um, that we've had, you know. A lot of people in town hall were using one restroom and we're trying to spread out, um, as recommended, so we could, um. Use a little bit of the rent, but certainly, um, they, they, they just recently moved out. Um, those funds have a very hard stop of the December thirty first on there. And so, and then the other pieces, um, that I had shared, they, you know, possibly the moving fee. But it was not my recommendation, um, that we would support the other ones and, um. Then, uh, trustee McDonald, if you would like to speak, um, with the information that you shared as well, I'm looking for a number. And a recommendation so we can get this to you for an approval.
Uh, excuse me, oh, go on, go on trustee McDonald, sorry.
No, go ahead trustee Whitehouse, you first, please.
Just a quick question, what was, so you talked about the rental in, in your proposal. That considering covering the rent from the time they moved out to the end of this year, because that's the drop dead date on the CARES funding. What was the move out date, if anyone has, I, I thought it was March or something, I'm not clear.
It was after I came on board and I, I didn't join until, um, September. And we can verify that.
Did you refresh my memory on the memo you sent out on the dollar figure that we came up with, I thought it was.
So my recommendation, this is on one, yeah, one, we're on page one eighty eight inside of the, um.
Right, I'm looking at it.
Right, and so my recommendation was, um. You know, somewhere in the neighborhood of covering one to two months of the rent. Um, the installation and the connection fees of four twenty, I believe trustee McDonald. Um, agreed with part of the funding of the, um, the three hundred and twenty dollars of the move. For, for them to move their printer. And both of those numbers, we arrive, you know, between the nine hundred and the nine hundred and fifty dollar range.
Ms. Tippett, thank you so much for, for that information, I'm certainly willing to ask, answer any questions that the board has relative to the memo that. That I shared, um, after, um, I, I shared that memo with the board, um, we did receive the information from the, the chamber. Uh, that we requested regarding the budget, so I appreciate that information, I was able to take a little bit. Um, further look at that and. I would like to, um, ask the board to take into consideration to also allow, in addition to the. Consideration for the first month's, last month's rent and the cost of the moving truck. Um, additionally, the cost of the utilities, that's, um, a generous. Subsidy, subsidy, I think, or I'm not sure exactly how to put that, but. That's a, a grace that we've offered to our residents, and so if we have additional funding in, still left, that hasn't been taken advantage by the residents. I think that gives us, um, the ability to have some flexibility and maybe open that, that program up or. Um, maybe some, uh, utility assistance for some of the businesses as well, so it definitely, um. Impacted my decision making, able to look at all of the, the evidence and information, so I appreciate that, so. I am still in supportive of, um, the dollar amount that originally was suggested. Um, but I also am willing to compromise and adjust a little further to. Um, incorporate the cost of the utilities, which I think was about twelve hundred dollars, if my memory serves me correctly. So I would be comfortable with either the nine hundred dollars or, um, I believe it would be with the addition of the, the utilities about twenty one hundred.
They, we don't have the utilities called out, on the request, it was three thousand six hundred for rent. Printer was four twelve seventy four, internet and phone was one thousand three forty eighty eight. Furniture for one thousand two forty one sixty seven, and then the phone and internet installation was a hundred and cost to move the printer was three twenty.
Thank you, Ms. Tippett, I believe what I had done was I had calculated out the, um, the internet as like a utility cost and then divided it out over twelve months, so.
Yep. I do remember that, yep, I do, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, so thank you so much, so that, that's kinda where I'm at, if you, if the board members, um, have any questions for me.
So what was your bottom line figure again, Ashley?
It was nine hundred and twenty.
Yeah, but then you started about adding another twenty one hundred on here.
Uh, in addition of twelve hundred dollars for the utilities, and that was just, I'm pulling that number out of my head without that. Memo number in front of, in right in front of me.
Is it internet and phone, one thousand three hundred and forty eighty eight?
Yes, yep. So my thought process was, is that we've extended that help out to the residents, if we still have that money available, can we offer that opportunity?
For point of clarification, we did two separate, um, up to twelve thousand dollars for the businesses, the chamber. Um, when we did the original selection committee, um, wanted to be on that and so they did not apply for those funds. And that was the original two hundred and thirty three thousand that we awarded to the businesses. And then the, you, the residential, uh, utility program that was, um, we have the, that grant program going on. It is strictly residential.
Right, and I don't think that they would apply for that, if we're considering it from the, the, from CARES funding, so. I guess, how much and then where it's coming from are the two conversations that likely need to happen. Um, my, my stake in this, and I just wanna do the reminder, is the costs provided by the chamber, a total of seven thousand fifteen dollars. And twenty nine cents are expenses above and beyond that they would have had to pay at all. None of these costs would have been associated with this, had we not broken the MOU. With the understanding that they would have never entered it, knowing it was such a temporary thing and it would be broken, so. Um, essentially, in my mind, as a summary, as we have done. We have done the chamber, um, which serves our community and injustice by. By this, or having occurred, uh, obviously, there's no malintent. In any way whatsoever, but either way, uh, uh, an organization that serves our community is now out. Over seven thousand dollars because of this unfortunate situation, with that said, um. You know, that, this is how it happened, I think at minimum, um, to just say that we, you know. Knowledge that and, um, that we wish them well, maybe splitting that cost with them would be a good gesture. Um, I am confused about tying this into CARES funding. Um, because it is a space needs for our staff, and I understand some of that has to do with COVID, but the rest of it. Um, the, the MOU wasn't created, um, as part of a response to COVID or during that, so. Either way, it was broken, um, so I, my, my suggestion would be at minimum, splitting these expenses with them. And this money coming from discretionary board monies, that would be my suggestion.
Any other thoughts on that?
I, I also, I, I think I had said in our last meeting, I would be, I was not really comfortable with the entirety of the seven thousand. Um, I would be, I would be fine with doing a split of that, which would be slightly above. I would like to comment, in, in addition, I, I agree, I appreciate the work that the chamber is doing. And as, yes, they did not have those costs at the Harrison House, I, I do not know what their prior rent situation was. But I would assume that had they not moved into the Harrison House, they still would have had expenses similar to what we're looking at here. That they would have incurred for even the. Si- five to six months that they were in the Harrison House, they would have been incurring those expenses regardless, so it's not, they. It wasn't like they went from paying no expenses to, then we had them move out, they were paying expenses, moved into Harrison House. Had no expenses other than the two hundred dollars that was gonna be shared for the printer. And then, yes, once they moved back out, they did then reoccur those expenses, but I don't think we created those expenses that were not there. Prior to the MOU being signed.
Other thoughts?
So are we, are we then looking at, uh, at approximate thirty five hundred dollar reimbursement contribution? And being, is the general thought being paid out as some sort of discretionary fund, I think there's some rollover from. The board of trustees or?
That's one, um, option that's been proposed is the thirty five hundred, I'm, I independently am not. Will, am not, um, favorable to that, I won't approve an amount above twelve hundred. So I think that it's about, um, coming to a decision on what that amount would be.
So, and just as a, I guess, a clarification, and then I don't know if a point of order, it was a little confused trustee McDonald, cuz he had said, I believe the rent. Number was approximately nine hundred and I thought, I understood that you were also saying, you would be willing to help with the. Utilities cost, which would be an additional twelve hundred, which would bring it to twenty one hundred, so I'm a little confused as to which number you were comfortable with.
That's correct, and I apologize, um, I didn't clarify that when I was talking about the utilities, I was thinking a prorated amount. But I'm certainly willing to consider up to the full twelve months, cuz that's something that we've done for residents as well, we've considered that whole twelve months, so.
Perfect.
That, that is a valid point and I, I would adjust my approval amount up to that, but I won't, I won't do half.
And then if I could also just ask, if we can in future, when we have something such as a memo that was well put together by trustee McDonald, if we could make sure that get, that gets added. To the board packets, um, just so that that information is also publicly available, because it is being utilized in making a decision from the board standpoint.
Could we have a total of that nine hundred dollar value, Ashley, excuse me, um, McDonald had recommended plus the one thousand three hundred and forty dollars. And eighty eight cents, can someone? Do the math, I don't have that original nine hundred dollar value in front of me.
Uh, nineteen forty.
Nineteen forty?
So nine forty plus the. The, the thirteen and change.
Oh, nine forty.
And that nine forty, I believe included the, the moving costs as well.
So then you're twenty two eighty.
Twenty two eighty, or we could round it up to an even twenty three.
We got support for twenty three?
I feel like that's.
You know, I mean, I, I. I, I value the chamber for sure, you know, I want them to move on and do well, they've done a great job for a lot of things. You know, I, I really don't have a set, set amount, so. I mean, if the board's, if it's the will of the board to go with twenty three. Or split it down the middle. Why don't somebody make a motion, let's see what happens.
Well, uh, point of order, Mr. Mayor, would we, uh, invite public comment, there's certainly.
We will, let's, let's just do that, let's do that, Crystal. Let's open it up to the public.
If there are any individuals wishing to speak on this, if you could raise your hand at this time, please.
Mr. Mayor, there's no public comment at this time.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board, anybody wanna entertain a motion?
Um, before I make a motion, I'd like to thank the board for taking the time to make a quantifiable decision on this, and with that, I'd like to make a motion that. We approve a reimbursement to the chamber in the amount of twenty three hundred dollars to come from the discretionary funds. Second.
That's your vocal.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, move on to our next item, uh, this is a, item D two, it's a resolution number thirty nine dash twenty twenty. It's a resolution adopting, or appointing a town administrator, Brad.
Mayor, this would be the resolution that would follow up on approval of the contract, uh, at the last meeting. Uh, this would appoint Patty Garcia as the town administrator, uh, I would point out that, the, um. CRS thirty one sixteen one oh eight requires that you have a majority vote of all members, which would require four positive votes.
Okay, board members, any quick comments on this? Okay, let's open up to the pub real quick, Crystal.
I would point out, Mr. Mayor, that if, uh, you'd like to, I note that Ms. Garcia is, uh, in the audience.
There is no public comment at this time.
Okay, let's bring it back to the board. Um, can I get a motion to approve resolution number thirty-nine dash twenty-twenty, appointing the town administrator Patty Garcia?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes, welcome aboard Patty. Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you. Mayor Hammond? I make a request if Ms. Garcia is willing to, to make a short introduction or statement, or just say something to our board and staff.
Yeah, we got time.
Sure you have all kinds of time. You, you were in budget talk for so long. It was really great information, though. But anyway, yes, super excited. Um, my last day in Loveland is tomorrow, so cleaning out my office and. And tying up loose ends and things like that, so um very. When I made the announcement to our leadership team in Loveland, um, they, the majority of them really. Uh, reached out to me and let me know that they will be um of help whatever they can. Um, most of them have been in the region for. A long time, ten, fifteen, twenty years, working in public administration. So they will be a huge resource for me and for the rest of the town of Wellington and for the town board or town trustees. Um, so, you know, that really encouraged me. There's, there's just a lot of history that they have that. They started pouring into me this information, like, I can't take those notes fast enough. But um, yeah, so excited, be there on December first, and um I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
All right, well, happy Thanksgiving. We'll see you then.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item three. It's a resolution forty, twenty-twenty. It's a resolution adopting the Colorado Model Municipal Records Retention Schedule. Crystal?
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees. Um. So in two thousand and five, the board approved a resolution that adopted the model retention schedule. And it was dated for January eighth, two thousand and three. That resolution did not state that any future amendments would automatically, automatically be adopted. So since that time, the Colorado Clerks Association, as well as the State Archives Office, have done. Um, updates and amendments throughout that time. A complete ten-year comprehensive review was done in two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven. So this resolution is re-adapting the model retention schedule, along with any future amendments that may come about. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board members?
My only concern, and I, I mean, it's records, which is not a huge. Problem. What I do have a concern with is automatic is putting in ordinance or in place that just says we will automatically follow whatever the state does. Because if it's someplace down the road, again, I don't know what they're going to do to records, but if they were to adopt something that was just completely ludicrous, that did not fit with our town. Um, it is slightly concerning to me that we would just automatically adopt that without us making that decision. That's my only concern. I have no problem updating it. I would prefer not to have it be something that we just automatically go with whatever the state says.
All right, the Colorado Clerks Association, as well as Archive Office, they. They review those and, you know, debate the pros and cons of any adjustments that they do make. Um, with that, Wellington can also file a local exception if they see any issues with. Um, what is inside that retention schedule.
So, so who monitors the updates? You do, Crystal?
Yes.
And you flag them if they need to be flagged or what?
Yeah, I do.
Anyone else got a question? Let's take it out to the public.
Ms. Tucker, I've, I've seen that record retention policy, and it's like three or four inches thick, and it's very detailed. So I don't envy you, and I appreciate all of the work and effort that you have to put into the record retention and management for a municipality. So thank you for all of your hard work and what you do relative to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hammond, sorry.
So, okay, that's, that's, we, we thank you very much for wanting to take this on, Crystal, okay? You know, appreciate it. Let's open it up to the public.
Mayor, I see no public comment at this time.
Okay, then, we'll bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution forty, twenty-twenty? Adopting the admission of the Colorado Model Municipal Records Retention Schedule.
So moved.
Okay, if you got that, we'll take a roll call.
Trustee Gator?
No, because of the provision that we automatically accept future changes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, item four. It's a resolution number forty-one dash twenty-twenty. This is a resolution appointing the CAC. Activities Commission Member. This is a, uh, am I, am I looking at this right? This is Wyatt Schwendeman and Cheryl Deets.
That's correct.
Okay.
Items four, five, and six all pertain to the appointment of board and commission members to the various boards and commissions we have. Um, there were, were interviews conducted on November fourth by trustee Whitehouse and Kenny. And their recommendation for the CAC is Wyatt Curtis and Sherrell Peets.
Okay. Any, any, any comments, board members?
Yeah, I can give a little background on it. Um, Wyatt came with a lot of enthusiasm and excitement to be involved in the Wellington community. Um, Sherrell's already been a volunteer for a long time, longtime volunteer for CAC, and was looking for a seat. Um, but they are both have some incredible passion, and they're going to be fantastic volunteers for that, that commission, so I'm very excited for them.
Anyone else? For taking it out to the public?
I do have a public comment from Christine Gator. If you could please state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Christine Gator, eighty-one thirty-two, fourth street. I just, uh, if you could say how many applicants were interviewed. That would be helpful to know, um, if it was just the two, and those two were um accepted, or if it was out of five or six, or how many um. How many did you have to, what pool did you have to choose from? Thanks.
For the CAC, there were three applicants, two were available for interview.
Any others?
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion approved, um, forty-one, twenty-twenty, appointing Community Activity Commission Members Wyatt Curtis and Cheryl Deets?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Thank.
Abstain? Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Next item is resolution number forty-two, twenty-twenty. This is a resolution appointing the Board of Adjustments Member. And that's Eric Stoll. Any comments on that, the board? Do they know anything?
Eric was the only applicant for this position, but he did come very excited. He has um accounting background, I think, or bookkeeping. I can't remember exactly. But he was uh more than qualified and very excited to serve the community, so another great volunteer available for us.
Good. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm actually looking at his, his, yeah, he, he does, he's got fifteen and a half years of experience as an accountant at Jack, so I think he probably knows his way around some of that stuff. But uh, yeah, and again, one, one applicant for the, uh, I believe, two openings.
Okay, are we having to fill that other opening, Crystal?
We will be posting um other vacancies that we have once we get through this round.
Okay, all right, good enough. Let's go ahead and take it to the public then. There's no other comment.
I see no public comment at this time.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve, um. Eric Stoll to the uh Board of Adjustments?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number forty-two dash twenty-twenty.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, I am D six, resolution number forty-three dash twenty-twenty. This is a resolution appointing a. A member of the Parks Advisory Board. Aaron Leasley. Any board members got anything to comment on that?
Yes, there were two candidates, uh, one available for interview, which was Eric, Aaron Lazy, Leasley, Aaron Jerome. Um, Aaron is an avid volunteer coordinator in the community for many organizations at this point. She's incredibly passionate about our community, has young children, so is very invested in parks. Um, and is going to be a huge asset to the PAB. We, I suggest, uh, I definitely recommend her for this position.
Any other comments? Okay, open up to the public, please.
I see no public comment at this time.
Okay, can I get a resolution? We'll bring it back to the board. Can I get a resolution to, uh. A motion to approve resolution number forty-three dash twenty-twenty, appointing uh Aaron Leasley to the uh Walton Parks Advisory Board?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, last action, action item. Oh, it's not the last, yeah, last action item, uh, number D seven, to propose ordinance uh concerning the regulation of retail. Medical marijuana sales in town of Wellington. Brad, what's the update?
You're muted.
Mr. March, you're muted still.
I apologize. Mr. Mayor, this is one, my apologies. This is one we've held as a placeholder for quite some time. Uh, based on the initiated ordinances, which are currently in front of the court and two actions. Um, we have had some settlement discussions, won't go into what those are. Uh, but have um ventured to offer the possibility of referring this to voters if we could get some things worked out. Um, and I, my understanding has been that the board is, is very willing to do that. Uh, we made that offer, uh, and had discussions, but at the last meeting and did not hear back. On Thursday, I sent an email to their attorney, uh, again, followed up on Friday. Understood he had not heard back again and hoped to hear back in time for the December eighth meeting. The status of the two lawsuits is that we have briefed one of them. Um. The proponents have the obligation to brief um in their, file their first brief in the other one, so we don't have any briefs due. We've set the briefing schedule off to December eleventh. My suggestion would be is we discontinue putting this on the uh agenda as a placeholder. If it comes back, we'll reintroduce it. And uh, either it'll be in conjunction with the lawsuit, or alternatively, it will be in conjunction with a possible settlement offer, which may require an executive session. So no action, but that's just the report.
No action required here?
I don't think we need any action. I just, by way of just filling the board in, I don't think it will continue to show up as a, as an item on the agenda.
I don't, the perspective of um not acknowledging it.
I, I think it's still out there, trustee Kenny, and, and without question, I will give you a report at my um relative. To my attorney's report, if nothing else, but at this point, I, I would suggest that. Um, where we are, we've set the um tax issue for out for election in November of next year, as you'll recall. The other issue, the, the place that we're at is, is that um the hearing officer. Uh, struck the matter down and said that the ordinance was insufficient. That may come back as a result of the lawsuit, or it may come back as a potential settlement, but I think it's got to be, I, I, my suggestion would be it be reintroduced. As opposed to be a recurring item, and I will warrant to the board that I will provide ongoing updates at my attorney's report each subsequent meeting. If that's acceptable.
My preference, oh, sorry, go ahead, trustee Kenny.
No, go ahead. I, that was my statement, so that I still.
My preference would be, as this item is still outstanding, I don't have a problem maybe pushing it out two meetings, um, if we think it might be longer, but I would prefer to leave it on our agenda. Um, it, to show in good faith to the voters who, regardless of how things were done appropriately or not appropriately, did signify by signing that they did want to see this matter. I would prefer that we hold on removing this from consideration until we actually hear from the courts one way or the other.
Okay.
I mean, I did have a question. I mean, obviously, from a procedural standpoint, I mean, I, I, I will agree with the trustee Gator that we can put it out, maybe not every meeting, but. I would add some concerns that we're not tabling it, or I don't know, what procedurally does it just kind of?
We can postpone it, we can postpone it indefinitely. The, the suggestion I would have, and I certainly don't have a problem doing that. We could, I, I don't know. I, I think it'll come back on the eighth by way of at least my attorney's report. Um, and again, that there are briefs that are due the, the eleventh from the uh proponents on both actions, so we'll keep the board apprised. I think if we set it out um to the, what would be the twenty-fifth, no, probably wouldn't be the twenty-fifth, that'd be Christmas. Uh, so, yeah, twenty-second. Um, if we set it out to the twenty-second, we'll make sure we put it on the agenda. My suggestion would be is we don't need to continue to put all the material that we've been putting in relative to the um. Uh, relative to the initiated ordinance copy and the memo from September eighth. It just seems like that's filling up the board pack list back at needlessly. And so if, if we can, we eliminate that, and then um what you may want is a motion then postponing this until the meeting of. The twenty-second, unless something else occurs and we need to provide further reports.
The point of information, are, are, I'm unclear, were we meeting the twenty-second of December? I think traditionally in the past, we haven't, but I don't know. Is that still?
I thought Mr. Bird had something on that was advertised for that date.
I believe we're meeting it as of that date. I know I received a communication about being available and said I would be. I haven't heard since then.
Mr. Bird has published a public hearing for the twenty-second, so we will be having a meeting that night.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Maybe we can consider even moving it to January, because I didn't understand that it's not time sensitive and that we have till November, but. Um, the perspective of, we just took it off the agenda and it will. You know. Mayor, it's, it's not a good look, I think. So more, it's for perspective. I understand the situation. But I want to make sure it does come back and that we can tell our, you know, per. Perspective voters on the situation that we're not ignoring it.
Why don't we put it off until the twenty-second, and if that's acceptable, if the, if the report is, is limited, we'll then bring it back when it's appropriate. We'll certainly know more by then, trustee Kenny, and I certainly don't mind reporting it.
Yeah. I'd be cool with that.
Okay, so this, we don't need to go off this to the public then at this point. We're just going to motion to postpone this.
To, until the twenty-second.
Okay, can I get a motion to postpone the ordinance concerning the regulation of retail and marijuana medical sales? Uh, to December twenty-second meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, on the reports, town attorney, anything? Brad? Okay, you don't have anything.
Yeah, no, I do too. Uh, my apologies, I was muted. Um, I apologize. I meant to get this in the board pack and then did not. I, I think the board generally received a memo. Uh, there, there was clarification relative to the voting issues on the sage matter at the last meeting. Um, and reviewing, I had raised a question at the last meeting, whether or not that had passed. I went through and did some research and did do a memo. Again, I apologize for not getting in the board packet. But the, uh, research, um, substantiated that it did pass. Um, if you, the board's, um, meetings are, are governed by Roberts Rules of Order. Uh, there also is a supplement to that that is, um, secondary to that, the governance, Robins Rules of Order provides, which is called Bob's Rules, which was a abbreviated version that was done by an attorney, um, at one of the C M L exercises. The, the upshot of that, when you did the research was, um, even though there were two abstentions, the abstentions counted towards a quorum, but there were three positive votes, I, as I recall, and two negative votes. Um, that was enough to carry the matter. And the, and the rest, the minutes, I would point out, reflect the fact that they did pass, based upon my memo.
Okay. All right, they passed. Uh, town administrator.
Nothing. Nothing, thank you.
Okay, anything from the staff that needs to be talked about real quick?
Yes, Mayor Hammond. I was asked by Trustee Whitehouse to give an update on our recruitment for the engineering staff for Public Works. And I just wanted to let you all know that we did identify a very highly qualified candidate, one that could serve in many high-level capacities within Public Works himself. He has in fact been previously a director of Public Works and definitely has a very strong engineering background. We are trying our hardest right now to recruit this gentleman to come and serve, um, here in the town of Wellington. And, um, this has been a, a good two-week-long recruitment, passed all of his interviews. Uh, trying to basically wine and dine this guy to come and say yes. So even now, I'm, I'm emailing him off to the side to set up another time to speak with him tomorrow to answer last-minute questions. But I just want you to know that we're recruiting this position first because it's such a, um, all-encompassing skill set that he brings. So by hiring him, that will help us identify our needs for, um, deputy director and/or another civil engineer as we're replacing Vince Gentry. So I just wanted to give you that quick update in response to Trustee's Whitehouse request.
Well, good. I'm glad you got that going. That's, that's real good. And you tell them we're working on getting them a new John Zier Gator scene right around them, okay?
That's awesome.
Uh, Ms. Wood, thank you for the update. I appreciate it.
Uh, it was a great suggestion. Thank you, Trustee Whitehouse.
Okay, no other staff? Um, we're going to move to the board. Uh, but what we're going to do on this board, we moved the item off our action item eight, which was put on the agenda properly and then taken off properly. Uh, it was put on by Trustee, uh, Gator and, and Kenny, and it's an important issue. And I'm going to let them have the floor so they can discuss this a little bit. And I think, John, you've done some research on this, so why don't you tell us a little bit about what you got going on here?
Thank you very much, Mayor Hammond, and I do appreciate you, um, take, giving us a chance to have this discussion. And I do appreciate the board following proper procedures. I did have some comments that I was going to share with my concerns, but, uh, this has addressed those concerns that I had, so I very much appreciate that on your end. And so kind of to give a little bit of background, um, we all have seen the, um, new health restrictions that have come down recently, um, from the state and then have been adopted by the county. Um, over the last few days, I have been corresponding with our county commissioners, our county health officials, um, sharing with them the concerns that have been shared with me by our citizens that are legitimately, that we have businesses that, if we do wind up going into another set of shutdowns, will not survive. Um, and that is a very real concern, um, that I have. And so I have addressed those concerns to both our, our county officials and our county health department in continuing to try and see what options or solutions that we could have in regards to that. I've also been in communications with our, um, sheriff in regards to some of the really, for me, concerns that had to do with, uh, from my perspective, uh, potentially infringement into the constitutional rights of our citizens. And really what my goal was with the agenda item was, one, to share a statement that I'll read in a moment from our sheriff, um, in regards to what they will and will not be enforcing. And number two, for us as a board to really, I would like to see our board really supporting our community in whatever ways we can. I appreciate Trustee Whitehouse's comments that we are not an enforcement agency and we cannot enforce that, and I absolutely agree with that. At the same time, I do think it is very important that our community sees that we are working for them as much as we possibly can and that we are fighting for them, because from my opinion, we represent the citizens of our community. Um, we do, our job is not to represent Laramie County. Our job is not to represent the Health Department. Our job is not to represent the state. Our job is to represent our citizens. So that is my statement. I would like to share with you a statement from Sheriff Smith, and I did reach out to him. He said this would be fine for me to read on his behalf as he could not make our meeting tonight. So beginning the statement, Sheriff Smith and his office understand and appreciate that we are in a very difficult time. COVID has created many public health concerns, and the recent spike in reported incident infections and hospitalizations has public officials, public health officials understandably concerned. Under Colorado statute, state and local health officials have the authority to implement public health orders. Violations of those orders are to be reported to the public health officials to investigate. The orders relating to the operation of businesses are rather complex and tedious, and therefore only public health officials are in the position to interpret those orders. If the health authority believes they have a violation, it is up to them to communicate with that party in question. If it does not resolve the issue, either the county attorney or the state attorney general can choose to intervene and file motions with the court. These issues are not to be handled or, or are not handled by local policing agencies. While the sheriff understands and appreciates the concerns of public health officials about private gatherings, he believes that private gatherings, especially for constitutionally protected worship, are not an area that can be regulated in the manner as outlined by the state in their current color-coded health restriction scheme. This opinion mirrors the position the governor has taken when it comes to other First Amendment right to peaceably assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. Therefore, the sheriff's office, while urging caution with gatherings, will not be fielding calls or complaints about gatherings over the Thanksgiving holiday weekend. And that is the end of the statement, and I would just like to add that I would wholeheartedly agree that all governments should be fully respecting the constitutional rights of all of our citizens.
Thank you, Trustee Gator. Trustee Kenny, you have anything you want to add here?
I do. I have a, a few things. First and foremost, I, for, for all the residents of Wellington, I'm wishing you happiness and health and to make sure that you're taking every precaution necessary to make sure that you're safe. Um, and that your loved ones are safe and doing whatever you need to do. So that, that is above, uh, um, above all, I want our residents to be safe and healthy. So with that said, um, there's some major concerns, of course, that we'll be facing, um, our businesses right now with the current shutdowns and the statuses and indoor dining, for example. Um, so I have a few things that I kind of want to make just statements about, and then also ask for some input from the board um, about what actions we could also participate in to support our local businesses. So the first one being is it has become very clear that there are significant consequences for, um, any organizations that do potentially violate any of the restrictions in place. Um, whether or not they're being enforced and by who, and definitely not by the town of Wellington, we are not enforcing any of these items. Um, but it is known that there are significant concerns or consequences for violating any of these items. So with that said, um, and understanding the statement from John, uh, um, it's important to acknowledge that, also understanding who's going to be enforcing these. These are things that we should know, just so we can act accordingly and do what's best for us. Um, because it's not my job to tell you what's best for you or your family, how to worship, where to go, what to do. That's going to be your decision, right? But what I can say is that our town, um, relies on our businesses. Specifically, our restaurants, breweries, bars, they are the ones who are going to be suffering significantly through this, this current, um, closures and, uh, restrictions. How about that? So I think, um, and with, uh, some great input from, from staff, um, I think it might be a better idea to maybe see how we can offer additional support. So whether that is from a communication standpoint of encouragement and understanding of what's available from what restaurants and where to go and how to support our local businesses. Or my, the other thing I want to bring up is last time this occurred, we had moving parts and pieces. We were working on patios. We were working on understanding capacity concerns. And we were doing these actions to actually physically support our businesses. This time around, not so much, and the things that we did before aren't so applicable because it's freezing cold outside. So how else can we support them at this point, acknowledging the same exact concerns as before, but almost in a more scary situation, right? So my ask of the board is whether we can actively participate in a task force, because we aren't currently within, you know, an incident command structure where we're planning these kind of things, where we can initiate and, and actively be involved in, in planning and supporting our businesses in conjunction with many of the service-related organizations in our community, like Main Streets, for example, or The Chamber, or Kiwanis, or whoever else wants to contribute to this. Um, we need to pull our businesses to say, what would help you? What do you need? What, what, what will help you survive? And then once we kind of figure that out, come back to the board and see if there is a funding request or what kind of actions or steps would be, would be needed that we're actually supporting our businesses. So that's my request to the board that we might start participating in that. I obviously would volunteer if that's an option. But, um, with the idea of we're going to ask the businesses what they need and then potentially come back with a funding request to support them and their specific needs for this closure.
Board members, any thoughts on this?
I'm a hundred percent in support of that, and I guess a question, I don't know if we have the answer now, but to look into, um, what do we have left available in CARES funding? And then would we be able to utilize that? So for example, my wife and I had gone out last, yesterday evening, and we walked by a restaurant that, uh, they had a heating lamp outside. So they had put outside a mobile heating thing, and that would be one option is to look at, can we invest in either some type of heating devices or coverings that we can utilize for some of these businesses to enable them to, even in the colder weather, offer an environment that people would still be willing to, you know, come and sit if they had a heater or something there? And could we use CARES funding toward that to help with that? I don't know if we have any left available.
I can let Judy speak to, you know, how much CARES funding that we have available. I don't know if we've got that off the top of, um, our mind at this point. Um, but that was part of the business support program that we did, is some businesses did put in for those heaters, those type of things. So, um, we did see that noted in, in several of the applications through that process. So that's probably why you were, you were seeing that. So, um, that was the avenue. But we can certainly look into what is additional funding that we have remaining, if there is any. But I know that we were trying to focus the remaining of the funds for our, uh, utility support program, because there's a lot of struggling individuals and families.
Yeah, in a similar situation where we acted before, we didn't have the secured funding from CARES Act that did pay for patio furniture, for example. That was something that luckily, you know, worked out later. But, um, my concern right now is the support for the businesses, and I realize that that funding, we need, we just need to see what they need at this point. I'd like to, I'd like to initiate that, really. And then, um, but if there's monies that need to be spent by the end of the year, that's also a consideration for sure. But, but, um, we just, we need to get out there. We need to tell them the board is listening, that the board cares, that, that their survival is essential to our town. So, um,
Trustee Kenny, I have a couple, I just have a quick question for you. Do you know who the, the current, um, players are to the, the, the business COVID task force? Is it just The Chamber and Main Street at the moment?
I assume so. They've been operating within that structure since the very beginning. Um, so I don't know. I haven't reached out to them. I've only been talking to businesses at this point.
Okay, so, um, what I'm hearing is you're offering to serve as like a liaison to the COVID response group? Is that correct that you're volunteering?
Yeah, uh, whether it's organizing something or fall into something else that I'm invited to, I don't know. I, I, I don't have those answers as of now, but I would want to make sure that we have a presence and we're actively participating.
If, if I may interject and offer something up, um, I want to be respectful of board members' times and, and, and also know that we do have staff support for this. Um, so I think this would be most beneficial if we had our communication specialist, Mahala, um, reach out to Chamber and Main Street and to say, how can we support? How can we help communicate the needs of our businesses? Um, I think that might be most appropriate, rather than trying to take some of your limited time as, as trustees. I think that might be, um, the best way to utilize staff at this time.
In addition to that, I would love a survey to businesses as well, to say, what are top concerns? What are your ongoing needs at this point, um, in relation to the specific orders that have been put in place?
And that's something that we could certainly work on, since we do have access to, um, utility billing information and, and being able to, to give them a call and see how that we can, we can support. So.
Awesome. Yeah, I would love to see that too.
Any other thoughts? Okay, make sure you let me know how I can help, you know, a lot of these people are my friends too, you know, and, uh, I'll be talking to them anyway. So I'm, I'm all about it. I'm all for it. I'm all about it, whatever we can do. You know, if we can do anything, and I know we're limited, not advocating to do anything. I'm not advocating to do anything that we can't do either, so. Since it's tricky, but we got to try. And, uh, I, I like the fact that we have some staff that, that can help us with some of that. And, and Chamber and Main Street, they need to help. You know, that's what they're about too. So I, we can reach out to them. They did a great job last time. We all did. We all did. So.
In the meanwhile, in the meantime, bundle up, because you can still dine outside and then do lots of ordering out.
Right? Okay, guys, well, I, I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought it up, because it was important. I really appreciate you two doing that, okay? So thank you very much. It's important. Uh, if there's nothing else, we'll follow up on it. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to bring up tonight?
I did have one item on my board report that was separate from this. I just wanted to update you. The last board meeting, we brought to you the request from the C A C about moving forward the tree lighting ceremony. Um, they, um, have since decided to start plugging into the parade of lights that the, um, Main Streets program has been planning. And so the C A C is actively participating with Main Streets and trying to put a joint event together. So I will, we're still, they're still working on details, but I'll update you more on that. But at this point, it's looking like we're probably not going to be able to do the variants, because that's part of the new orders, there's no new variances. But they are working alongside the Main Street program to, um, help with making sure that we can pull something together. So I will update you more once I have more information on that.
John, they're still going to light the tree up though, right?
Yes, it probably just won't be able to be an event. I think what
Yeah, they're just lighting it up.
Probably going to be pre-lit, and then people can drive by or whatnot. So again, they're still working out details, and as we kind of get that ironed out, I will, um, update the board further.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else?
The downtown lights look really nice. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey dudes, okay, I like, nothing? Anyone? Okay. You all did good. Ten o'clock. Can I, uh, at ten o'clock, let's go ahead and get a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a nice evening.